Let me call the meetings of order. I have 7:01. All right, can someone on Zoom confirm that they can hear us?
Yep, I can hear you. It's Eden.
All right, hey, thank you. Okay, so it looks like we have all the regular members, so the occupants, you may have to be welcome to sit through. Public comment? Start in the room. Thank you, first of all, thank you for those of you that are here for your time. Any comments or notes to make? So any comment on Zoom? Do you have a hand up?
I do not see any.
We do have a comment here in the room. All right, go ahead. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lyman Woodperson. I'm a teacher at East Granby High School. I do not pretend to understand the everyday logistics of getting a budget for town. I understand that you're having fun in New Zealand. With that being said, I feel necessary to come before you and speak with you to save our teachers. I do not know all of the city teachers at risk of losing their jobs. I do know one. Rachel Palmer has been my teacher, and she has gotten me through high school. She has been a mentor, a friend, a coach, and a lifeline. She has heard of us. She's listened to us for countless hours until we understand the material. Not only is she an amazing teacher, but she is also one of the best track coaches. She is out there every track meet in the cold rain and heat, screaming from the sidelines, telling us we can do it, coaching us through the pain, encouraging us through every step. As a student body, we cannot afford to lose her. I beg you all to do what is best for us kids. Please pass a budget that will allow us to keep our teachers.
Thank you. Thank you for having the courage to say that. This one. Do there are comments in the room? Yes.
Joanna Taznawski, I'll just reiterate what I've said at past meetings about our Board of Ed budget. Our staff works incredibly hard, and if we continue to ask them to do more with less, we may unfortunately move them to other districts. And cutting the education budget now while our kids are still catching up from COVID will make larger problems later that will just end up paying for in the end. So, um, that's what I'm hearing.
Any comments in the room?
I'm just checking. Um, hang on one second. Um, nope. Good.
All right.
Sorry if you heard me. I'll cut.
Thank you. Our next item is acceptance of the May 21st meeting minutes, which were sent around. Is there a motion for those?
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes.
Accept. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Question? Okay, that carries. Communication correspondence? Um, I've got several things to share. Certainly, we had communication with the tax collector, which I forwarded to the board of members in terms of, um, the timeline, like if a budget isn't passed by July 1st, what happens? Not that we have to implement it as our job, as just rest of the month was last. Many email communications with the assessor to continue to better understand phase-in. What happens in a phase-in, what some of the challenges are, what's going to happen with that. Meet town attorney, who we also heard from, and also the select first select woman in terms of, you know, town attorney. And I heard from one member of the public. Normally, I wouldn't share that I heard from a member of the public, but this same member of the public that was here on May 21st kind of passionately speaking for a phase-in. And I heard from that same person, you know, speaking about, you know, acknowledging the challenges of the phase-in. So it's probably important to share with the board that, you know, within a couple of days, I heard a little bit of the other side perform. So, um, I don't believe that that person's opinion has changed, but just the awareness of the challenges of some of them.
Jeff, can I ask you to speak up a little bit, please?
Sure. All right, um, is there any other communication correspondence people want to? All right. So, new business is really, we have the budget. So we have, um, we have the results that came in on May 21st. So we want to discuss a timeline. We don't have to do these in order, but we have to, this is our agenda. We have to discuss whether or not to phase-in, and we have to discuss a budget proposal. So, um, first of all, I'll start just personally saying I'm, I am glad for the time since May 21st. I think, uh, meeting right after that, vote with the challenges we have, and trying to come to a conclusion that day, I think would have been tough. I feel reflecting on it, getting some better information from some of the experts I mentioned, I just feel well, much more informed and prepared to kind of work through a budget. So, and I hope some of the other board members feel the same. There is, to my knowledge, a proposed timeline. And, um, I guess with the first select woman, um, I'll go ahead and read this. One of the conversations that she and I had. It appears that a town meeting is likely to be... Okay, it appears that a town meeting is likely to be on June 5th. And then it would appear that a machine referendum would be on June 18th. So June 5th is next Wednesday. June 18th is almost, um, two weeks after that. It's a Tuesday. And my understanding is that's subject to the Board of Selectmen actually make, you know, voting on that. So I just bring that up as a potential timeline. Any questions about that? Okay, um, we have two other items. We have phase-in and we have budget. What I want to say about phase-in is, um, it's up to the town legislative body, which here is the town meeting. They're the only ones that can approve the phase-in. So, we as a Board of Finance can recommend it tonight, but we can't. It's only the town meeting can approve it. So if we recommend it, I would envision, um, multiple motion town meeting. Your first motion would be, shall we phase-in? I would envision that that did not go to the machine referendum because we would need the answer of that to actually inform the town meeting as to what the tax rates likely will be based on the budget. Because it could be different if it's a phased-in versus not a phased-in. So we would have to have, easy enough to do, but have, you know, I'm holding up the presentation from the last town meeting. We'd have to have one with phase-in numbers one without. That's how I envision that need. So, two questions before us. One is the phase-in, one is the budget. Does anybody have a preference for talking about the one or the other first? If they have a strong logical argument?
I'd prefer to talk about the budget first. I think regardless of what, if we choose to do a phase-in or not, I think the budget should be the same. It's my logic behind that.
I tend to agree, I think. You know, the town voted on a budget. The town gave us, to me, you know, they gave us an up and down. They gave us their non-binding, but they gave us some information about too high, too low, et cetera. So, okay, talk about the budget. Any general thoughts about it?
Um, I mean, I do. Um, I guess my two thoughts, and I think they go to, uh, I think we were honestly too low on both. I can agree with, I think, the numbers for the town budget. I think there were some saying it was too low. I could kind of agree with that. Um, I'd be, I'd be totally for giving, making that a little bit higher. And on the school side, I just, I can't, I can't get behind anything that's, that's lower than what it already is. I think that that's just an outright mistake on our part. I think I'll go back to, you know, I think the Board of Ed has done a great job for this town of giving two and a half percent increases in using money from grants to fund the projects that our school needs, the teachers that they need, the people that they need. Like, I knew last year when I started sitting here, all the, everything they talked about in my line of work said risk, risk, risk. And I am a very risk adverse person. And, and then what do you know, it happened, and we kept it so low, and now we're like, ah, it's so high. Well, that's because we went the risky route. And if we go lower than that, right, we're going to chew on a lot more risk. The risk to losing the teachers, well, that's not even a risk, right? Well, there's, there's seven teachers. Michelle Rifer, Mary Sirianni, Christina Reiloff, Catherine Diaz, Alicia Palmer, Kyle Fusco, and Joe Esposito. Right, a really good Spanish teacher in Christina Reiloff, math teacher, history and psychology teacher, language arts, and a fifth grade teacher. And I think the first two, Michelle and Mary, are interventionists or something like that. You know, like, what do we want the, the school to be, right? I can say it, I don't know how many times, but the school is the reason why the people come to this town. If we got the school, we have no town. I mean, that's just the fact of reality. And I think that, you know, the, the real question here is, right, yes, the people have to pay it right now. Well, that's because we've got a budget that's funded by 80% of taxpayer revenue. The real travesty here is that, at the top, we aren't trying to bring in business to help the people out. We can't do that. We're the Board of Finance. All we can do is fund the town the way the town needs to be funded. And I think it would just be a huge travesty to go down any lower than it is. Because then, what town do we have? What budget do we have? Who in hell wants to live here? Um, I've talked to many different people that have moved in. They all moved to East Granby for the same reasons why I moved to East Granby. I never had heard of the place in my life. I looked at school scores, and I'm like, I'm going to look here, and I'm going to look here. That's where I based my, my search off of. And, I mean, I know that...
On the town website.
I know that there's a lot of other people that have the same thing. And if, if we change that, I mean, I, I don't know why we want to be here then. And I don't think it makes any sense. Um, and I think, like what you were talking about, how a lot of people just thought the budget was going to pass. And so they're like, well, why are we going to come out? Well, the budget didn't pass, and I, I, I think that more people are going to come out and vote. So I just, I can't get behind anything that changes. I can't do it. I'm just not in good conscience. I think it's a mistake, and I won't get behind that. So, I'll make a statement kind of following up on that. I understand that people have voted no. You know, I'm not a voting member today, so whatever you guys decide, we have, we have to move forward with. What I do understand is that the, the Board of Ed budget was set by both Democrats and Republicans. It wasn't, and we've come down significantly up there. The Board of Selectmen was not along party lines. It was a joint budget proposal as well. So this is, this is one of those things where a lot of people got out and voted because they were riled up about it. The people that just assumed we live in a kid-friendly town didn't get out and vote because they just assumed it would pass with a majority as it always did. I don't know if that's going to be the case again. I don't know if it will pass, but we do need to be cognizant of, I don't think we're probably as far off from the numbers as the vote alluded to. So, as you guys make your decision, just keep that in mind, that our school district and our town is very, um, very lean as it stands right now. And any cuts do measurably impact anyone who's touched by them. I'm seeing some of these names for the first time, and I can tell you, I, even though I only have kids in Seymour and Allgrove, these names look very familiar to me. I can tell you that a lot of these teachers and a lot of these staff have positive reputations as they are. And I know we can't vote on a motion, but we also do need to think of the positive impact that each of these teachers have on our, on our staff. And as we think about the town budget, most of the people, if not all the people employed by the town, live in this town, live in this community. So we're not just impacting the budget. We're impacting the livelihood of people who live here.
I'll just, go ahead, man. I'll just say that as elected officials, we have an obligation to go with how people voted. I think it's a slippery slope to start anticipating would turn out, have impacted one way or another. At the end of the day, we have to accept voter results, right? I agree with you, Jeff. I don't think we necessarily need to be that far apart on the numbers. But I do think that we need to acknowledge how the majority did vote and make some change accordingly.
I don't, I don't disagree with anything you guys said. I, I agree. I think, I think the Board of Selectmen probably could use a little more money. I think the Board of Education did a good job, watching it, even in that state they're in, what would happen with budget. I think who I want to talk to are the people who aren't here, right? So I thank you all for being here. You, you are concerned. You came to this meeting. We, this is, this is a public meeting. The meeting prior to this was a public meeting. And our people are coming out, right? So we can't, we can't guess what those people were going to do. We can only kind of point at them and go, why didn't you come and do your civic duty and, and vote? And, and help us make informed decisions, right? So we're, we're stuck in a spot. The vote that we do have says that the budget was too high. It doesn't tell us how high. Is it half a percent? Is it 20%? So that's where our night gets long, because now we have to figure out what their intent was, even though which way they voted, right? I'm hoping that we can come up with a solution that we can keep what we, what the budgets that were proposed and maybe, even possible a little more, but we have to, we have to walk through that, right? But I agree. This, one of the reasons we came to this town was, we looked, we looked at the school system. We looked at the population. We, we heard great things about it once we heard about it. Right, I knew it existed. I knew it was on the other side of the airfield, but that was about it. Until we started exploring homes, and we were like, this is where we want to live. Um, so, we have to work with what we have, and hopefully we can come, come to some kind of agreement that we can put back in front of the town. And hopefully whoever's listening, whoever's not, and talk to your friends who aren't listening, come out and actually let your voice be heard, not just a few people, right? And because it was a very small population, a part of our population. It's historically, that's how it is. Unless there's something that really gets people riled up, and, and usually then it's one side or the other. It's not, it's not the town coming together. So, we got to work it out for us. Hopefully, we can come up with something that is good for the town, good for our school system, keeps jobs, keeps our, keeps our children in a good spot, keeps our town safe too. We're also looking at the loss of a police officer, right? And, you know, people don't talk about it, but we have plenty of crime coming up the road and, you know, and coming in our neighborhoods. So, we, we got to work on finding a way to it. I agree, we need businesses. The unfortunate part is that the businesses that people like aren't the ones that actually bring in revenue. You can put all the Stop &amp; Shops and Period Jones you want on Route 20, you get a few dollars for square footage. You need, you need buildings and businesses that have capital equipment that we can actually tax as a town, vehicles that can actually tax the town, but that's the type of thing where the town doesn't want. So we have to find that balance. I said it last week. We have a, we have an Economic Development Board, and we have a Planning and Zoning Board. They need to work together, right? Our job is to work with what they give us. And right now, we're not given a lot. We have this assessment that came up. Everybody's taxes going up because of the property values. We need those two groups to come up with a plan that says, if we do this, we do this, work it out, and then present it and say, we believe this is how we can solve the budget problem that we have. Until we can get together on that, we're going to run this year over year. I don't believe, you know, we had talked about it, you know, a few meetings back, that this was coming. But it wasn't coming because we were lowballing everybody's budgets. It was coming because they were getting money that they weren't going to keep getting. This isn't, this isn't a fund that they can squirrel away and save for next year. It's one-year money. Every year, we have to do this, right? So we need to come up with a solid plan that produces revenue year after year after year, or you're going to run into it every single year. So, let's work together and figure out with what we have in front of us today, what we can do to present back to the town. Hopefully, the town speaks up, and, and more people come out and say, this is what we want. So we have a little more, a little better guidance to work with. Thank you.
You guys want to make any comments?
Yeah, I just thought, I, I mean, I can ditto whatever you all said in the comments about what a great town it is. But it kind of circles me back to the fact that as a Board of Finance, it's our job in a very, very difficult year. Okay, it's not, and we can ascribe, uh, we can, we can try to read the feelings, but I think, I, I have a little different take on the results. I think the results were relative to the overall increase. They weren't relative to the budgets as much, okay? I think we worked through those budgets. I'm comfortable with those budgets. I think as a Board of Finance, it was our job to do the best we could and kind of oversee some of the pencil sharpening that went on. I think we did a good job. I think we got to some levels considering inflation and all the other things that are going on that were actually fairly respectable or defendable. But it was that number. It was that tax, and there was a lot of fear out there what that would look like. I think a lot of people really don't, still didn't know when they went in there, what they were going to be. So they just went in, you know, I thought it was surprisingly close considering the results in some other towns. That being said, uh, I guess I'm going to have to merge two things at one here. But, uh, I think if that budget went out split over two years with the increase split, I think you could sell it. I think people would feel like we responded to them. I don't think the actual numbers, and I'm not trying to be rude, but I don't think most of the people understood what those numbers meant or what they represented for cuts, et cetera. To your point, we rely, they didn't come to the meetings. They weren't there. We rely on them to tell us if it's wrong. But I think they told us what was wrong was the tax increase, not the budget. So I don't think they had enough information to really make that decision. And I think we did. And I think we did a hell of a good job getting it where it needed to be. I think, getting back to the meeting we had the other night, a week and a half ago, I think if we split that over two years, it lessens the impact. If, if, it, I'm not, I'm not a four-year guy, but, you know, I know you want to talk about that later, but, because I think it just drags it out too long. But if you show, you acknowledge the fact that this increase this year may be very painful for people, and you say, okay, let's split it in half. We'll do half this year, like you would if you were trying to sell something. You know, so pay us half now, pay us half next month, or whatever it is. And we, we, we feel your pain, you know? But I, and I would also be in favor of taking $100,000 on the capital, because I think we've done a very good job, and I've had a lot of capital. So to mitigate it somehow, to show that there was a cut somewhere. You can't cut debt service. The only thing that I, I see there's some wiggle room on this capital, for me personally. But, uh, that's basically, those are my thoughts.
I'd just like to add that if, if we come to that point where we, we agree on a phased approach, we, the town needs to hear that we're splitting this, this burden over two years. That does not mean there won't be more burden next year, right? Taxes still could go up, so they have to understand that completely. And we have to figure out a way to make sure that everybody understands that it, we're lessening the pain this year, spreading it over a couple of years, or three years or four years, whatever ends up being if that's the route we take, it does not mean that taxes still won't go up. Inflation's still here. Things still cost more. So you could have that plus, but I do believe, for everything I've looked at, it's still overall be less year over year, you know, than if we just took it all now. Because this, the tax that you get this year is the same tax you're going to get next year.
Well, we, we can discuss that more when we get to that split conversation.
Any other comments, anything? I mean, what, what I would add...
That's what you're going to put on the phase-in afterwards.
Yes. Um, I mean, certainly, one of the things that struck me was, you know, I, I think people did vote on the budget. They voted on the tax increase, but the question is the budget. You know, they voted, you know, in recent years, it's been 60% yes. And this year, it was down 45% yes, which is new. So I feel there's a need to address the tax rate as well as the budget. And certainly, without talking, I also came to the conclusion that capital presents an opportunity. Not that we don't have a lot of capital needs. We're going to try and actually, in this period, for those that don't know, we're trying to move from a $600,000 a year funding of our capital account to 800. We already, what was presented previously, already stalled the increase we were going to have in the coming year to save $50,000. But I think we have to show some movement. So I'd be in favor of reducing capital probably by about 100. Um, and I do that as a deferment. I think, you know, things that are really needed, we can do. Things that are hard to get all right, we'll have to wait till that July, um, on the next year. And I also think there's an opportunity about three years out to put that $100,000 back into capital, you know, again, dangerous to, we plan five years out. Dangerous to count on specifics, but I see that the budget allows that. So, you know, to me, I, I think a, um, and I don't know that, I don't know that $100,000 is enough. You know, in my mind, if we don't phase-in, I feel like we need a little money from both the other boards. Not a lot, but I think we need a little, and I think we can get in the neighborhood of like a 2% less tax rate on, on folks without phasing in. And I think with phasing in, I think the models that I showed the folks will be around nine the first year and around nine and a half the second year. So not, neither year very easy, but, you know, two years that are definitely less than 14.
Jeff, something I would add to that, to Jim's point about being a risk adverse. The reason why we were building up that capital is because we know we have some major expenses coming up. So the town needs to understand that we're adding, we're adding risk to a couple of other things that need to be taken care of that have been pushed off over the past couple of years. So, and that's a school roof, right? So just make sure that when we, when we say things like that, everyone understands that, that there's an impact. It's not just a knob we can turn without any, without, without any, without any effect, right?
We have a, we have a debt service that's rolling off in a couple of years. So I think that's kind of the thinking on that, not to interject more confusion. But I just would, I would just add one thing, and that is, if the tax increase was 1% and the budget were $1 million more than what we proposed, it would have passed. So, you know, to, to the idea that it really is the impact on the individual. It's the effect on each person. I, I think we need to show, understand that in some way. I just propose a way that I think is more, more rational for our job as stewards of the town budgets and as responsible members of the community to properly fund the things we see needs for. But we can't, we can't walk away from that, you know?
Want to talk phasing? Or you might, you might try and get a?
I think the phasing is a critical part of that. I mean, if we don't decide on that, then we really don't have a budget, do we?
I think we can. I think we can come up with a compromise that works. Worst comes to worst, we can revisit the phase in if we find we're out of the pass. And even if we get a budget that we do feel comfortable with, I think we still should discuss if a phase in makes sense.
Well, the only reason I say that, Oliver, is because, just looking at it for me objectively as a budgeteer, okay? The idea of that the financial impact on the tax error, what we're presenting to the town, is dramatically different. So we, we can't, I, I think when you isolate the number from reality, which is what we're going to propose, I think that's, I don't think that that's realistic. I think if we have, because li- listen to the difference in the increases. That's what we're really looking at. We're not looking at, so if we're not gonna do a phase in, that changes my metrics completely on what we're gonna propose, because then obviously you're looking at it just straight on, a number, right?
I. Yes, yes and no. I think we can, um, work within the confines of the five-year model in order to lessen the burden this year. I'm happy to talk through that, but I think that's more, if it's ready for, I, I don't know how we want to handle it, how we want to pursue, do we want to?
Well, I think, I think we wanna, I think we should talk about phasing. Because I think we have, the models that I share, um, again, those rules, I said, this is a starting point. Um, but without a phase in, with some reductions, um, we were at a 12 and 45, 12.45 in the first year and 6.67 in the second year.
So just to be clear, and I had to ask this before, is that using the total brand list or is that using the isolated properties?
The total, the total, yeah.
Okay, okay.
So, which we thought was, I mean, I put the numbers that are not, that are the isolated properties and it was 10. But I think we found that we couldn't be sure those isolated ones were represented, just.
The only reason I ask, and this, now, obviously, we gotta talk about phasing, right? The reason I ask is because the impact on residential is different than commercial.
It was a total residential.
Okay, got it.
Total residential brand list.
Yes, thank you.
So we have a scenario there with, which the second year, so we're not phasing it in, yet the second year comes with this 6% tax increase because we're pulling out every stop to, to bring down year one. You know, and that's what's in that model, that, you know, one or two people's opinion. Um, and the same model, same numbers phased in evenly over two years. It's eight points, eight point, roughly 9% and roughly nine and a half percent. Certainly, what, with the help of, um, a lot of people, the assessor, the first selectman, the town attorney, we found that a phasing can be done. There was some discussion that we thought it might be too late, that we might miss a window to do that, but the town can choose to phase in up until the time we pass a budget instead of milling somebody out. It's a lot of work if we do it, but.
Couldn't we get some editorial from our assessor on the whole thinking and the work involved?
Yeah.
Is there anybody? I mean, I just had some questions too, because I saw the memo from Scott yesterday. And then his last sentence really resonated with me. There are several factors to consider when proceeding with the phase in option, such as how doing so may impact future grants from the state economic debt. I think that just might be one moving part of this. Is there more that we can be enlightened about so we have all the info on phasing? I think that might be a good time.
Sure.
Sure. So I did work in a municipality that did a phasing. Um, first, two years were fine, and then people forget what they wanted. And every year, you're increasing their taxes by a substantial amount. And people who did not realize what they were agreeing to, or people like you say, who are not involved, they're like, wait, my taxes run up this much every single year. And municipality work it, it took nine referendums to get a budget to pass year four of a phasing. So, yes, it spreads out the pain, but you're putting yourself in such a deep hole. I spoke with Jeff, there's legislation that passed this session that could potentially take $500,000 away from your budget next year. So I think that, when you're saying, okay, nine and a half this year, eight and a half, whatever the percentage was for next year, that money's coming away because of legislation that was passed. They, they're changing the way we assess motor vehicles. And they also passed something for veterans that 100% permanently disabled veterans aren't gonna pay taxes anymore. That alone was $160,000 gone, um, in tax dollars. So I think putting it out there that, okay, we're just, it's gonna be this much this year, this much next year, is not realistic at all. It's, it's just not realistic. Like I said, I ran the numbers for the motor vehicle change. They're supposed to be going into special session to fix some of the issues with it. But the bottom line is instead of assessing at 100%, we're gonna be assessing at 70% with a straight line reduction. There's gonna be a huge drop in your motor vehicle grant list next year. So, again, saying, okay, this is our percent this year, this is our percent next year, is not realistic. Um, again, when I, when I did work with a phase in, everybody liked it year one because of the difference. Um, it ended up, every year, it got harder and harder to get a budget to pass because of that. As far as the timeline of it, I'll get it done. I will definitely get it done. And we're already gonna be so far behind the eight ball for getting, I'm supposed to have my backup to the computer company for tax bills to be printed on June 16th is our deadline to get tax bills printed. So if we're talking about not even having a rundown until the 18th and then not knowing which way we're heading, it's gonna be, again, I will, I will make sure it gets done. All of the state reports and everything else that we've done that they bigger grants on, everything's gonna have to be redone. Um, so it's not just, it's not just an easy decision. Again, those are, those are my reasons for not, not thinking it's the best idea. I've seen it in play. And in the state, I talked to our vendor today that does all the tax bills for the state. I think there's a couple that do it on their own. But I would say 90%. There are only five towns right now, and everybody's going through the same thing with revaluation. It's, I mean, throughout the conversations, I don't think the conversation isn't really our property values are too high. It's the increase because of the swing from commercial, um, from residential, commercial properties back to residential. And it's unfortunate that that's what happened to it. Um, I just, like I said, from talking with my colleagues too, I was with a bunch of my colleagues at a conference last week too. And the ones I talked to, nobody had signed on to do a phase in, because it does have such long-term effects on passing a budget.
Hi, um, excuse me, it's Eden. I just wanted to let the people on Zoom know that was our town assessor, Donna Murphy, speaking. The camera is not swiveling to the speaker, so I just wanted everyone to know.
So Windsor's doing a split, correct? Are you familiar with that? They're doing the two-year phase? Is that what they voted on?
I'm not sure what Windsor did now.
I think Windsor, I know East Windsor kicked it a year, two, a year ago. So they had to deal with it this year or last year. Uh, Windsor Locks.
They delayed their rebound.
They delayed, yeah.
They delayed their rebound.
East Windsor.
Windsor, uh, Windsor Locks delayed their rebound by a year.
Did they do the five, wasn't that the town you were referring to for the five-year or four-year? The fourth year? So they, they previously did the four-year?
Yes.
And then this year, they just kicked it down the road a year?
They, they delayed the rebound. Everybody was thinking the property values were gonna drop, and they're gonna be in worse shape than they were if they did it this year. Even if I were to do a rebound today, there'd be even more disparity.
Right.
Property values are just not, are just not, they're, they're increasing at such a high rate. So Windsor Locks did not do their rebound. They, they delayed it to the 24.
And East Windsor did that. Every, every town staggered. We're not all on the same schedule, because I know Grammy didn't do rebalance. They did it last year.
Grammy did it last year.
So there's a stagger. And I know that East Windsor kicked it down the road a year. You gotta get permission from OPM, I think, or from the legislature to do that.
Correct. There was a bill that was passed two years ago and giving people the option if they wanted to delay their rebound a year.
Right. One, one, one point to what you said, I, every town, those percentages you just talked about for a motor vehicle, are gonna affect our bigger towns substantially more. So I'm hard pressed to see the legislature not doing something, because the number we're looking at is a, is a big number. But imagine if you were in Enfield or if you were in, you know, much bigger, they've, they've gotta do some. And I, I've been doing this for 16 years. I've never seen the state do something legislatively that dramatically affected the finances of towns, because you have all the legislatures in there, legislators in there that are going up for reelection this year.
So.
So they're gonna, I think they're gonna try to fix it. That is my understanding.
Well, just, and again, just so you know, the fix had, if they don't quote unquote fix it,
Yeah.
it'd be 10 times worse than it's gonna be. But they are changing the way that they assess, trailers are not gonna be assessed at all anymore. And it's gonna be a straight line depreciation where there's years where certain vehicles hold their value, trucks, SUVs hold their value more. Everything's gonna be based, but instead of assessing at 70% of NADA value,
Yeah, I know.
we are now gonna be assessing at 70% of 80%. Just those numbers alone is, it's a huge difference. The, the way it would be worse, the, the way the bill stands now is that commercial motor vehicles, any commercial motor vehicle is gonna come off the motor vehicle grant list and will be assessed as personal property. With no pro-rating, and it sounds like, okay, that could end up not being a bother. It's when you're pulling it off and then.
Well, other than the fact that you fill out your own personal property value, which isn't, maybe they'll auto audit it.
Well, well, no, we'll still get the list from DMV that'll tell us what vehicles are here. But even if, let's say you work for Nationwide and drove a, insurance and drove a sedan, that's gonna come off your motor vehicle grant list too and be assessed differently. So those factors all together. Again, when I ran the numbers just the way the bill first passed, I mean, I ran it on the 21 grant list, because that's when the bill first passed, the loss just for motor vehicles was gonna be $485,000. Doing it the new way, it drops it down because we'll still be taxing the commercial vehicles, but the percentages are still gonna be a drastic increase. And that brought it down to like $400,000. So between that and, like I said, the, the veteran thing, that's a hole that's gonna be, have to be filled next year.
I, I totally understand your concerns. You're just dealing with what's in front of you, and that's your job. I just don't, uh, uh, I, I guess I kept nothing to say other than the fact that be hard pressed to see the legislature not do something to correct.
But.
Something that has that large of a financial impact on all the legislators or districts.
Well, and just so you know, I'm on the legislative committee.
Yeah.
And the, we worked with legislatures. It was a combination, so we had the one-year delay on it. It was supposed to be in effect for the 23 grant list, but we got it delayed a year till 24. We came up with a compromise. The number I'm telling you is our compromise. That's the compromise that they hope to be going back and voting on. It's not the original one, because the original one is just, it's way too extreme. And something got thrown in a quarter of 12 last day of session that made them vote down. It had already passed the House. It made them vote down what, as an association, what our computer vendors can even handle. It took that into consideration. So, uh, there is gonna be a, a fix, but the fix is still gonna reduce your grant.
So just to set, one last question, to simplify it from my, my own thinking, are you aware of any towns that have split it over two years and the impact or the comments from them?
Not in two years, no. I do know Insonia did it, and Sonya did it for three years.
This year or previously?
They did it for three years. They started it in '21.
Okay.
I think that's been part of my struggle. I don't know if my other peers on the board have had any better success than me. I was trying to find examples of other towns that had implemented this and implemented it in a way that they were happy with the results. And I wasn't seeing many. And that, that really gives me pause. I, I don't know if others have had any better success at finding examples.
So, well, I'll just tell you my thinking based on what I read. And I did talk to a few folks that went through it, and I was able to find some like Windsor and East Windsor, different towns, and heard the different, I, to her point, I think, I feel bad for East Windsor, because they kicked the rebound down a year and all that happened is it went up. And if you look at the anecdotes from their Board of Selectmen meeting, the read it or the comments, the reason was they said, we're gonna give the real estate market a chance to stabilize. They, it, it did just the opposite, right? So we're not really doing that. We're, we're encompassing what we have here if we take the phase in. We're not changing our rebound. That, that's crazy. The other concern that I have and to the, to the comment is, is that I don't, first of all, this is a board that will not be the same board in 2026, because there's gonna be elections. So I think anything we do, we should be responsible enough to do within the timeframe that we control, and we have an understanding of the agreement that we have. Uh, that's the second thing. The third thing is selling it to the voters. I think that's probably the biggest one. The Windsor Locks point, I mean, the fourth year of a large increase, people have moved, people moved into town. They're just looking at, what the hell is going on with the taxes, you know, in plain English? And why are, why is our tax increase, I'm just gonna take a number, 16%. You split it over four years, it's 4% before any increases every year. So you're at 5% or 6% every year, and they're looking at towns around us that might be doing a 2% or like we used to do, right? So my, my feeling is, and, and I think it's sellable, as you said, in a town, listen, we gotta pay this. There's no way around it. We split it over two years. We're lessening the impact this year. We're also lessening the impact on residential, because the major increase was residential. So that formula that we were talking about previously, what the impact on residential, we're, we're splitting in half the ship from residential to commercial, or commercial to residential, if we split it over two years, okay? So that in and of itself has a, and, and you've got the numbers there that Jeff just said about what the increase would be. I think you could sell it to people if you, I mean, you sell it, but you could convince, you could make logic out of it to say, okay, we get it. The, the increase was too high. We split this in half for you. Will you accept it? And I think you'd be surprised. I think that's, that's showing that we did our job. We found a way to lessen the pain this year. But it also does to, to, uh, when Jeff was, uh, doing the, you know, the, the financial impact comment at the last, last, uh, last meeting, it lessens over the life of the tax, because it's, it accrues interest, right? So you're, you're building, basically, suffice it to say, you're saving residential folks money if you do it that way, because you're spreading the increase to next year, okay? Some of the increase. So you're taking some of the burden, you're cutting it in half. You're, you're lessening the impact on residential this year. Eventually, that, that's gonna hit, but it'll be next year. So you give them another year, because I, I can only speak from a budgeting standpoint as a homeowner or business owner. It's, it's the, it's not knowing, like this year, they didn't know they were gonna cut this huge increase. That's what throws people up against a wall. But if you present to them a fixed, this much base increase for this year and next year, we're splitting it in half, I think that's showing we did our job. We presented them something different without.
Jeff is, sorry. Jeff, Jeff looks like he's anxious to say something, Mike, I'm sorry.
No, so my big thing, Mike, is I, I agree, I, that the big thing is we need to look at the, the voter base and what's in the best interest of the voter base, not having hard conversations. At the end of the day, in, in the ideal world, the phase in should be 25% every year for four years. But we, we see what in the real world, the ramifications of that. Because what that does is that cuts down the, the four years that those people are paying in taxes significantly, and it shifts that burden. We, we shouldn't have to sell it. We should have to explain it to the, to the tax, to the tax base that this is what's, what's good for the town. It's what's good for the, the voters, because we understand that this is money that we have to earn. And at the end of the day, the general government budgets that we're voting on the Board of Ed, the general government, we need to increase taxes every year at some rate to service those, those pieces. So these conversations, they, they can be held together, but they should also be separate at the same time.
I agree.
And a, a phase in, I just, I feel like the, the more we can get out of it, the more money it saves our taxpayers in the long run. And we just need to balance making sure that we can keep them understanding it year after year. So.
The education part.
Yeah, that, that's exactly.
Said that a thousand times back and forth in different ways. It's the education. There's a base. You're gonna have a base if you do it two years or four years. That is the minimum you're gonna.
minimum you're going to pay. And there will be tax increases. It's not going to get less expensive to run our town. So as long as people are educated and understand that and to the point it was made that we tend to have the memories of goldfish on things like this and we will forget. Next year, we'll be arguing over it, not us, but the town, what, what, it said 4%, but now it's seven because there's a 3% increase. So that's what I'm concerned about is that I, I think, I like the idea if, if we do it, let's keep it within the realm of this board and don't go past two years.
I'm super.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I mean, if, if that was the route, I think even though yours makes more sense in the long run, if people remember, which we won't, that keeping it in a timeframe where the responsible parties are still available to explain it and, and keep it alive for that, so it's less pain over two years instead of all the pain in one year.
So let's just use one real world example, just so that everyone understands what's going on. If a house goes up tax increase of $1,000 this year, if we split it over four years, that four year tax increase is $4,000 that that person will pay. If we do a phase in approach of 25% per year, that's a $250 increase the first year, 500 the next year. So up to 750. Then it's 750 the following year. So up to 1,500. Then it's 1,000 the following year. So up to 2,500. That is a net savings over four years of $1,500. So I think that we need to put real context around the conversation. Once again, understanding that four years and 25% is what's in the best interest of the voters, but it's probably not the best way to fiscally do it for the sake of.
We have that on a plaque that sits in the town center where people can see every day when they walk by it to remind them of what, what they may vote on and agree to. They'll be throwing eggs at it.
That's my main worry too. Because we've heard a couple of times tonight that people didn't understand or they're confused going to the polls. And we were working with numbers since March, February, and now we're going to throw something on them that we have to decide in two weeks. And we think that's going to educate everyone about it. I think they're just going to get more confused.
But I also think at a high level, it sounds great, you know, going to reduce taxes. But when I go through the eight pages here and I listen to what we just heard, there were a lot of caveats that do we all understand? I personally can say I do not. And I think that's why our town attorney had said, we can go through what, what would be the impacts. And I think that's a lot.
So Todd, the one thing that I'll add though, the motor vehicle, if, if I'm correct, the motor vehicle impact is going to hit us either way. It's just understand. So if we take this in a silo either way, the phase in approach is still.
For state grants, possibly. It impacts the state grants, the veteran exemptions. One of the things that I actually highlighted over the weekend when I was reading through this, you know, what impact does that have to our town? I don't know personally.
I, I struggle with the fact that we can't, we found a couple of examples of towns that have found no other choice but to go down this path. But we don't really seem to have real, too many examples of towns that have implemented it and then felt happy with the results. So it does give me some pause there. You know, it sounds like, Don, you're advocating for not pursuing that. And I want to respect our town assessor and what she is recommending. And I do think it's going to be a struggle. As Chris is saying, like year two, three, four, it's going to make it tougher to pass any budget, which could restrict what those increases are in future years. And I agree with Todd. Like I've gone through this document many, many times, and I cannot say with 100% certainty that I understand all of the ramifications of it. And for us to put the town in a situation of something that I can't completely say 100% sure, there's not going to be some sort of negative backlash, makes me uncomfortable. I think if we have to pursue it, fine, we can talk more about it. But like, I don't think we're going to have to pursue it. I think we can be more flexible with our budget and not need to do a phase in.
So I'll, I'll give you one other consideration from a budgeting perspective. If we did it over two years, let's say, because that sounds like what more people would be on board with. My, 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 my thought would be that that would limit the impacts on workloads, limit the impact on long-term grant concerns, stuff like that. What it does is that even though it might be harder to pass a budget next year, it gives our town time to decelerate their budget ask versus going from that, the Board of Ed, 11, almost 11% to be a plus one, going all the way down to 5.74% where we're at now and lowering it even further. If we can pass those and then say, hey, we've seen the impacts of this. They were negative. We can't reduce anymore and here's why. Or the impacts weren't as bad as we were expecting. Maybe we don't need the 3% increase that we were going to ask for. We can do a 2% to decelerate and, and cut off. And I know that's speculative, but it gives us the ability to assess over a longer period of time, the impacts of what these budget reductions are to the town government are going to, are going to do.
I think all the risks marginalized or brought into two years is far better.
Yes.
That's about the only way I think I could, I could get behind it is I don't think I'd want to see it pushed much further than, than two at all. I mean, it's like one of those things, like it's, sometimes you just got to pull the Band-Aid and go. Because yeah, then it's like, well, this, now I got to live with this thing for what, two years, three years, four years. And, and I guess to your point, right, I don't think, unless we were all like lottery winners and billionaires, I don't, I don't think we're ever going to feel good about, you know what I mean? Like, none of us have that much expendable income where, where we don't care, right? That's what makes this hard. But I just, I think we just have to do what's best for the town, right? And, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I guess taking off on what you said, we, to me, in my view, we don't have, there's no good choices here, right? We're all having the best choices we don't like. What I'm thinking about is we need a choice that the town's going to buy and get behind more so than, you know, than we would like. I think both scenarios, first of all, the only phase in I would consider is also two year is because I think the longer it goes, the worse it is. Both a two-year phase in and a non-phase in, remember the modeling I've done, have pretty high tax rates in both years. I mean, you know, one, like I said, is it about nine, about nine and a half, the other is about 12 and a half and about six, something. Personally, I like the fact that it goes down more in the no-phase-in option. Not necessarily a fan of, you know, if ripping the Band-Aid is the right term, that's fine, but I'm just more liking that option because in that model, with some reductions, we can reduce the tax rate we told people. And in the second year, it's better than for, better than the phase in model. The other thing is we have to be prepared anyway for the town to say no to, to, to phase it. Yeah, it is something that has to be sold to the attendees at the town meeting. And I, you know, I don't know how to predict how that would go. I know for me personally, like Jeff, you laid out earlier, math was great. Took me three times during the phase in to actually get to that point where I could, you know, write it down and say, oh yeah, math, math looks like it's good. So I just don't, we just don't know what to expect in that, in that medium.
Can I just add something from like the revenue income side as well? If it does pass tonight to go to the phase in, I think there would have to be, I mean, I'm reading the distressed municipalities. We get airport authority money. So are our revenues going to go down? Are we going to get less grants? Are we going to, I think all of the revenue side of it, I understand the impact of the tax, but there's a lot of implications that would have to be considered and deeply explained to the public and understood fully by the board prior to that. I think that's a very.
But I don't, that makes me really uncomfortable. If we have to go down that route, that's fine. But if we can pursue an alternative, that would be my preference.
I think so. I've heard, just talking, and this is anecdotal, I'm not going to spin, but is more the vote impact than it was any sort of, you know, it's the ability to actually get that budget passed over time becomes through the market be less. I, and maybe, maybe you would know. I mean, I haven't heard anything dramatically, any dramatic economic. They do reference it. They talk about the effect on particular grants, et cetera. But it certainly would change the formula a little bit. I just, I'm like, to your point, I'm not familiar enough with it. But I haven't heard that. Have you, have you heard anything regarding that in terms of other revenue being affected?
Well, yeah, any, any reimbursable exemption, the dollar amounts are going to be different.
But was it negative? Like dramatically negative? Was it?
Well, yeah, if you're, if you're, if you're basing your budget off numbers that were the grand list, and now those numbers on the grand list are different, then your reimbursements are going to be different.
But to what extent? I mean, if it's, if it's a 0.1% difference, nobody's going to care. But if it's a 35%, you know what I'm saying? I just haven't, I, to be fair, I haven't dug into that, you know?
I mean, I.
We didn't have enough time.
Right. And I guess you could just look at it. If you're talking about a 50% instead of the values that were submitted, having it be 50% of the increase less than that, I would say your, your reimbursements are going to be based on that. So that could be.
But you're still, you're still, your grand list, your grand list is smaller, right?
Right.
So I always fall back on, does that make you look poorer? And would it work in your favor?
That doesn't.
You see what I'm, see where I'm going?
Yeah.
I mean, maybe.
That was not correct. Because what happens is a lot of these grants are not equalized. So whether your tax.
Oh, so they figure, yeah.
Yeah. They equalize it based on where you are in your reval.
So to that point, it would offset itself somehow if they equalized it?
I, I can't tell you how ECS is, how it would impact ECS. That's, that's way above my pay grade.
Right.
I just, I just think, again, if, if the town attorney is saying this is going to have this effect on it, I can't say that, no, it's not going to.
I just haven't heard that. I'm just curious if you had. Did one of your assessors say ECS went through the roof or went really lower? Or was there, I, I would think if it had a dramatic impact on revenue, somebody would say something somewhere.
And not every town has airport authority money. We get a big substantial amount of money.
Windsor Locks, Windsor Locks gets more than us, I think.
So maybe they have something.
If to your point, Mike, we haven't had a ton of time to digest this, right? And I think we have a lot of questions that I don't think Donna would necessarily have the answers to, right? So.
I could get them, but I tried to relay, like, tell me, tell me what, what, what you need so I can get it. As far as the airport authority, again, I'm totally opposed to the phase in. I don't know the impact on that because I think that is a set dollar amount for a statute that we get.
That is fixed.
I do not believe it would, that necessarily.
It just added up in the statute here.
Were specifically addressed. But what the impact is, I don't know.
So if we had budget year to budget years, you know, we had 1.8 million from the state excluding pilot money. In our current year's budget, we're projecting 2 million next year. So I would think that the impact would be that growth of 200,000 would be less. But I don't know. I, I'm, I'm a few, I don't know. I would think we'd end up closer to 1.8 than 2.0.
I think he's a good guess. I don't, I don't, but she just made the point that it's equalized. And that she, I, I understand that. So I'm curious if they equalize it, why would it affect us at all?
And again.
You don't know.
I don't know how they're doing, there's.
Yeah.
And again, most of the statutes are written that you're going to get this percent if we fund it anyway. So to change the numbers that we had going in, I gave my numbers to the state. We have to submit those by March 1st. So they've had our numbers since March 1st based on the grand list. So how they end up incorporating it into the budget.
So I just want to thank you for the information that you have brought because it has shed more light on it for me certainly. But I think this conversation alone shows how much we really don't understand and how, you know, in order to put together a budget that, well, we think it could be this and we think it could be that and maybe legislative will do this. And I've never seen, we just don't understand. And to put forth a budget that we don't truly understand, I think it's.
So I think, I think there's a way, the way to get through this though, right? So we here right now are not sure how it works, right? So we need to be educated. The town needs to be educated, right? So I think that our goal tonight should be, if we were to phase it, what would it be? If we were not to phase it, what would the budget be? And then have that presented at the town meeting with somebody who can actually explain it to the people who actually show up and listen. And then if possible, they have a choice. Is that possible? Can we have a?
No, we have to vote on a budget.
It has to be, but you can't have a phase or a.
Tried that 15 years ago.
And what?
Where you're not allowed.
Like yes or no? Which, which one do you prefer?
Yeah.
They can't.
No, you got to vote on a budget. And then they could say no, and they come back to us and then we got to vote. That's their yes or no.
It's not like a ranked voting situation where you're like, here's option B, here's option C, which of these three would you prefer?
Yeah. But is that legally, you can't do that? Or that's just how we do it? What's the most, I mean, is there anything else somebody wants to say? I wonder.
No.
Whether it's phase in, number of years, and then move from there to the budget? Or we want to pick a budget and then ask what we want to phase?
I would advocate for moving toward the budget. We could circle back to this if are struggling with the budget. But I think we're at a point now where I don't think we're switching one way or another. People tell me if I'm misreading. All right, Kelly, you ready? Make a motion to put forth for town meeting action, a total budget of 27 million, $642, I'm sorry, $642,911, which would include a Board of Ed budget of 20 million, 200,000, and a general government budget of 5 million, 638,181, and a debt service of 1 million, 204,730, with a capital contribution of 600,000.
Get back to him real quick.
Please.
Total 27, 642, 911. Town, 5 million, 638, 181. Board of Ed, 20 million, 200,000. Debt, 1, 204, 730, and capital, 600.
Got it.
May I interrupt? I'm sorry, just because I'm, I'm percentage on descent.
Sure.
Can you please give me what the current 589 is now or not? Of course, we don't have any money.
I believe the original budget that went to the referendum was 20 million, 270,000.
Yeah, that's what I have.
Now, I'm proposing it be dropped to 20 million, 200,000.
You made a motion.
I just have a question on the motion. The general government was 5 million, 638,000 even. And I noticed in the proposal, it's 5 million, 630,000, 181 that.
Oh, did I make a change? Sorry. That should have been the state of same. I apologize.
The town one is what, five?
638 even.
Even. Scratch the 181.
So you're going with 5, 638 even.
So the total will change?
Yep. Pardon?
Total changes?
I would imagine it would, yes. 27, 742, 730. Yep.
642.
Oh, sorry, 642. Yes.
642.
27 million, 642, 730.
A second. So we have a reduction of 100.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So what was, so what's your thought process of dropping the, the school budget by, what was it, like 70,000? So what?
So, so what I can do, so a, a lot of thought did go into this. These aren't just arbitrary numbers. So I'm, I'm happy to kind of talk about all of that, including my logic behind the, the Board of Ed. So what, what folks may or may not know is every year, various members of the board work on a, a five-year capital plan, or I'm sorry, a five-year budget where we each kind of run different hypothetical scenarios based on the feedback that we're getting from the various boards and what. based on the feedback that we're getting from the various boards, and what their desire is for spend, and what we feel the taxes could be. Um, so, the version that Jeff sent out was a version that I requested based on this budget. And what it is, is it's tried to incorporate feedback from Jeff and other members to get us to a compromise that would work. So, what this does is, there was a majority of people who felt that the budget was too high. So what this would allow us to do is, it would allow us to drop the mill rate from thirty point five to thirty even, which I think is a substantial amount of savings for people, and I think that was one of the reasons that it failed. Um, another thing what it does is, it keeps the general government funding as it was, and the logic behind that was fifty-two percent of voters either said that they felt that the general government budget was too low, or just right. So it wanted to adhere to the will of the voters for that. Fifty-four percent of voters thought the Board of Ed was too high. So that was the reason that we reduced it by-
Forty-six, and what was the, forty-six said it was just right, or too low?
So, so two different things. I, I just, so the first number I gave out-
Yep.
Was on general government.
Right.
And that was fifty-two percent of voters either felt it was just right, or too low.
What was the Board of Ed number for that?
So that was the, that was the next piece.
Yeah.
Uh, so the next piece was fifty-four percent of voters felt the Board of Ed budget was too high.
How many thought it was just right, or too low?
Right, that's the-
Give me one second, Mike, I can tell you-
Because I think you want to compare apples to apples.
Sure.
Apples to apples, no.
So, yeah, but overall-
Well, I'm with you on the number, I'm apples to apples, you know?
Sure.
Yeah.
That would be forty-six percent or so.
So forty-six versus fifty-four.
Correct.
So eight percent difference, seventy thousand bucks.
Yeah, so, so, the reason where I struggled with the Board of Ed, was I kind of going back to the February meeting, and I'm, I'm looking at for Bob and Missy here. You guys did a wonderful job presenting us different, what you call phases, right? So when we looked at the two phases below, where we were, I think it was like three point four two was phase six, or phase five, and the phase of that was, give me one second here, four point seven five. So I originally thought that those were the logical starting spots, but when we were able to work with the numbers, and I'll get into a little bit more detail on how, um, it gave us a little bit more to the Board of Ed. Because that was the goal, right? How, we know there are people who are concerned about the taxes, the mill rate dropping will hopefully address that. But we also know, we're going to balance that against the needs of the school, and the folks that want to make sure the seed, the school is supported. But we also have to acknowledge the fact that people voted, and they voted, but it was too high, so there has to be some sort of reduction. So that was the smallest amount of reduction that, in my mind, could be made, that still allowed us to make that kind of a swing that was good. Um, Bob, I know you are generally very good at public comment, taking opportunities as a resident to, to weigh in, and I would ask, regardless of whether this passes or something else, if you wouldn't mind saying, this is a budget that we can support or not, I think folks would love to hear one way or another, what your thoughts are on this. Um, the challenge, I think, that we had with the model that went to run the budget was didn't address our cash balance, right? We kind of saw that. We saw that our cash balance was dropping as low as six percent in some years. We want to try and keep that at ten percent. Not only is it good fiscal sense to keep it at ten percent, we talked about how the school needs a new roof. If we're going out and we're trying to get a bond for that, we need to make sure that we are in good financial standing, and showing that we are a responsible town by having ten percent. So what I think would have happened if we'd have gone with the old budget, was the folks' point here, we'd have probably been looking at a six percent tax increase next year anyways, just to try and get us back to that ten percent range. So, with this budget that I'm proposing, what it does is it brings it up a little bit more than that. It's more like six and a third, or two-thirds. So it almost serves as an organic phase, right? This year is addressing the revale, and how we have to tax for that. Next year is how do we get the cash balance back up to where it needs to be? What I like about that is, you know, if, if the Board of Ed comes to us and says, look, the roof needs to be replaced, we can very easily get up to that ten percent balance without much of a swing, whereas the old budget didn't allow us to do that. If the Board of Ed comes to us and says, look, we feel uncomfortable, that we can go another year or so, it then gives us the ability to either lower that tax amount, or potentially increase the amount of money we have going to the general government and the Board of Ed, or hopefully some combination of both. But by taking this approach, we don't have to go through the challenge of going through a formal delayed phase-in. It allows everything under our control, and it allows to keep the numbers at a reasonable amount. So, I know I covered a lot, so I'm just going to kind of conclude real quick, and I appreciate people's patience. I wanted to make sure folks understood the logic, and it wasn't just random numbers being thrown out there. Drops the mill rate from thirty point five to thirty, which would reduce the average tax impact to the homeowner by almost two percent reduction. It barely drops the Board of Ed budget, and it keeps the general government the same, assuring no additional cuts, so we don't have to worry about any impacts to public safety. I know that was something that was brought up as a concern. It also addresses the issue of the cash balance, which I think we really do need to address one way or another. And it provides an organic phase-in, where we don't need to worry about tying ourselves to potentially losing revenues or doing something that we don't fully understand. Right. Sorry, that was a lot, I know.
I just want to add, the only thing you left out is it results in, in loss for teachers.
Correct, there needs to be, and, and that was part of the logic, is you look at that next phase down, I believe the next phase down was, three teachers were going to be impacted, so this reduces it from three to one, you're right.
Well, we, we didn't ever get to the phase down, we never-
No, but if we were to go to the next-
And if we cut it a hundred percent- No, to, to, to the point, the only, yeah, I can understand all your logic, I think you make a perfect sense. The only issue that I really ju, is glaring to me, is that you take a fifty-four to forty-six differential, or whatever, I don't know if that's the exact number, but I'm, I'm assuming somebody did the math, and you turn that into a hundred percent reduction going towards Board of Ed.
So I'm looking at it in two different ways, right? So-
Well, no, just, just sticking with the number.
Can I, can I clarify?
Yeah, sure.
So, if I had dropped the Board of Ed, but, I'm sorry, the general government budget, I would have gone against the wishes of fifty-two percent of the population that had voted to say, I want it the same, or I want it, uh, or I want it more.
Well, I thought of that, yeah.
That's a fair statement. Whereas with the Board of Ed, fifty-four percent of people, it's, you're right, I should have phrased it as only forty-six percent of people wanted the Board of Ed to be more or less. I flipped it to make it say, this is why, it's the majority. I was trying to side with the majority on both sides.
Yeah, but for me, that's not, that's like a zero-sum game, I mean, you're taking all the, you're giving all the pain to the Board of Ed, and yet, the percentages were only six, eight percent apart.
So, I, I guess- That's significant when we come to a-
Well, let me, let me tell you my logic. I would be, I would actually support it-
Okay.
If the split was equal to the percentages you said.
I feel that goes against the wishes of the voter.
Well.
Like, I, like-
But that's, but I guess I would just say-
No, I don't think it does, I think it reflects it exactly, as opposed to divining what the-
So for general government-
I'll just throw the number out there, just for, for sure. Yeah, the, the difference would be, uh, and I'm doing the math over the pen here, so.
Yep.
Thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred dollar reduction to the Board of Ed, thirty-two thousand, two hundred dollar reduction to the Board, the general government.
I don't think that aligns up with the way people voted.
Well, we can do the percentage, we can make, it doesn't align with what?
The way people vote, so, right?
Or it does, exactly aligns with the way people vote.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Please.
Um, regarding the, the other pieces to consider. Is the Board of Ed taking on responsibility for some of the current general government expenses with, uh, the, with the, uh- Is it SRO and the, and the janitorial service?
That is a good question, Jeff, I don't know what the latest is on that.
Okay, because that would be something to consider, because that, I'm estimating at around seventy to a hundred dollars. So if that's the case, the town is getting an additional-
I think that needs to be honored as agreed upon, I forget what the details were.
I, I don't dis, I don't disagree with that, but I'm-
We, we're splitting, I can tell you, we're, um, Board of Ed and the town are splitting the SRO fifty-fifty, but there is no change with, uh, the facilities manager. The, he's the town employee, and we're paying him.
But isn't, is that split with the SRO the same as it was last year?
Yes.
There's no change. Okay, okay, there's no change, that's what I was wondering, because that's a big clarifying thing when we're talking seventy one direction or the other.
Yep, I agree.
But just to be clear, just so I, I, I think maybe I didn't make my point clear. The, the percentages that I'm suggesting exactly reflect the vote.
I, I'm not following, so-
So, so, just humor me for a second, forty-six percent of the people, and I don't have that number in front of me, so I'm using-
I have the numbers right here, if you want.
So fifty-six, fifty-four percent, did you say?
Fifty-four percent of people said the Board of Ed budget was too high.
So we take fifty-four percent, okay, and what was the, the Board of Ed, how much was?
Fifty-two for the general government were in a, in favor of, so forty were-
So it's almost a fifty-fifty split, but if you want to favor it by a couple thousand, you're getting-
This may be an agree to disagree, Mike.
No, no, I don't think it is, you're, you're, you're putting, because it was a slightly higher number of people that accepted the general government budget, you're putting all of the cut on Board of Ed. Well, I'm saying if you split it based on percentage, does anybody else follow where I'm going?
I'm trying to honor what the voters did, and I know we have disagreements on, perhaps things may have been different, but at the end of the day, this is how the voters voted, and I think it's very important to follow referendum, voter results, whatever the case may be. I know last year, when we did a budget, I felt six percent was too high, but as soon as it got passed, I was like, all right, my role is now shifted on how do we make that work? Like, work to agree with a mill rate that passed, that supported it. Wasn't what I personally believed, but I felt it was important to back the will of the voters.
Well, I follow that, Oliver, I'm with you, I, I think what's getting lost is I'm supporting the number. The gross number doesn't change in my scenario.
You're changing these-
I'm just changing the percentage.
And I'm saying that I think that is not how people voted.
Okay.
I, I mean, I don't know how to, how to say it differently, fifty-two percent of people thought that-
Do you have the actual numbers?
Sure, absolutely.
I have them, yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
If you don't mind.
Yeah. Uh, so for general government, too high was four hundred and fourteen. Too low was ninety-eight. Just right was three hundred and forty-one. Blank, fifteen. Board of Ed, too high, four hundred sixty-four. Too low, one hundred eighty-six. Just right, two oh three. Blank, fifteen.
So if you break those into percentages, okay? You have right amount or too low for Board of Ed is three hundred and eighty-nine, okay? Right, so-
Which is forty-six percent of the vote, you agree with that?
Is what?
Forty-six percent.
Oh, yeah, well, let me finish what I'm-
Okay, sure, sure.
Yeah, I, I don't, yes, I agree with you. But I don't, can't do the forty-six percent in my head, so.
Oh, you're good.
Uh, on general government, you had right amount or too low was four hundred and-
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine, yeah. If you took those percentages of people that felt it was right, or too low, and split that between the decrease to each budget, so, you know, you'd have to turn that into a hundred percent, and then turn it into, what did you say it was, forty, forty-six percent?
But they're two different questions. You don't just take the average of the two questions, you acknowledge the two questions-
So what about the three hundred and eight, three hundred and eighty-eight people?
Was too high, whereas more, majority of people felt Board of Ed, or general government was just right or too low.
So you're disregarding the other three hundred and eighty-eight people that said it was just, just right or too low?
I'm going with the majority in both instances.
Right, I'm saying I don't-
And I, I, I don't see how we would not go with that.
Okay. Yeah, I just think it'd be fairer to reflect the real, true democratic or vote, which was splitting it. You know, absolute democracy is ruling people, right? So if you take each person and give them a vote, they're a percentage of that vote. And if you break that into a percentage for the decrease, my, and I have another concern, it's very, I think if you cut the Board of Ed budget, and you don't cut the Board of, and, and, which is going to, is usually the more inflammatory budget, in terms of getting people low. Whereas we, if we compromise and come somewhere in between, or even split it, I'd be, I could support that. For the note, the gross number is still the same.
I think this is a very generous compromise compared to where I thought we would be starting with, and I will say this. If, if the budget does not pass next time, I would recommend that we take a day or two to digest and be able to run different simulations in the model like this. Because originally, I'll, I'll be honest, I don't think I would have anticipated being able to come this high on Board of Ed, if you'd have just put me on the spot that night. I think that this is a, we have to make a cut to Board of Ed, based on the feedback that we've got from the voters, and I think this is a small of a cut that we can do while still passing on significant tax savings for the voter, which I would interpret as their biggest concern.
What you're disregarding is a majority of people also said that general government is too high, if you split it.
And if we lower it, we go against the majority of people who thought it was either just right or too low.
Uh, well.
Whereas there's no way you slice the Board of Ed, other than people thought it was too high.
Yeah, okay. Any more discussion?
I mean, I, I tend to lean to the, I think people didn't come out and vote, because they thought it was going to pass. Um, and really, the, the difference is, isn't that staggering? That if you get a little bit more people out to vote, I mean, I think that the school budget passes. I think that's the route it's going to go, if people got lazy and thought, oh, it always passes, it's going to pass. And, um, and, and I guess for me to get behind dropping another seventy, I would need to talk to the Board of Ed and ask, well, what are we, what are we cutting with seventy thousand dollars? Because it's to say yes to do it, right? It's, you can't just look at and say it's a number, because it's not a number, it's, I have three, I have two kids, sorry, I had, used to have a third, I have two kids in the East Grammy, um, the school district, and I want to know how that's going to affect them, right? Just like I want to know how cutting the, um, the, the town budget is going to affect that, right? Like, I don't want to lose more police officers, I don't want to lose services that our towns need.
Refer to you to the presentation that the Board of Ed gave us on February sixth, outlining different impacts of the different, these, these numbers were not arbitrary.
I, well, I know they're not.
I truly did try to mitigate impact as much as we could, while still giving enough of a tax break where I thought people would come out and support that, because you're right, it could fail either way, right? And I think our goal tonight is to put forward a compromise budget that most people will pass. And a compromise almost always is, no party gets what they want, right? But hopefully this is enough of a compromise, folks will come out and support it, and it will pass this time.
But what I, what I struggle with is, you're not giving, you're taking everything from the group we need to come out and vote the most. You're cutting their budget more than-
I am taking the direction based upon the voters. Really feel strongly about getting to it by, by the will of the voters.
It goes back to the early conversation, Ed, people didn't come out and vote, right? I mean, and the ones that did are the ones that we have the data. So we have to make a decision on the people who got up and, and, and passed their vote. Well, it's, it's, it's the unfortunate truth, but we're, it's not our job to speculate what people are thinking. We have data in front of us, and we have to work with those numbers.
That's why I suggest splitting the percentage based on the vote, not based on our speculation.
I can get behind that.
Oliver's point, it's not an average of two, there were two separate questions that had two separate outcomes. And, and it's unfortunate the way that it leans, and, and the impact of it, but that's what the data says. So unless there's another place that we can find that seventy thousand dollars,
We can split it, between the two.
But then it goes against, it goes against what the actual data says, the vote. There were two questions, separate questions, they're not combined. That's, that's where, that's where Oliver's point is, is-
That's that's where that's where Oliver's point is, is that the unfortunate, that's the way it was written. Here's one budget, here's one budget, vote on each one, what you think.
So I understand the logic, go ahead.
Too high was the single highest percent of both budgets, right?
Right.
You can argue whether you combine right amount or too low, but too high by itself, it wasn't a majority, but it was forty eight percent. It was thirty four percent of Board of Ed. It was the plurality.
Yeah, Board of Ed actually got more votes for too low, so why don't we use that number?
For every person who voted Board of Ed was too low, three people voted it was too.
I don't know, my point is, but if you want to use straight percentages, more people said Board of Ed was too low.
It was that was that one question, you can't, you know, mix. But so with Jim's point, what what is the impact? What 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 is that seventy thou- if if it stayed this way, what is the impact? Is there a way to find creative ways to find that money that doesn't have the the huge negative impact that everyone believes it's gonna have, right? What what can we do with that, with those numbers? You know, we can we can argue back and forth on dollars and cents, but until we know what the impact is, it's just it's just us going back and forth, right? Can I ask, can I ask the Board of Ed a question?
Yes. I'm okay with that, yeah.
This is outside the answer. I'm one member of a sort of nine, five, that's probably is improved unanimously on everything we've always so far. Uh it's gonna have an impact, I mean, there's no question, but to get where we are now has an impact. They turn my views in this town for years, everything we do is a document. Uh and and we have many. Uh we brought up before excess cost grants. Uh many towns that excess cost grant comes back to town, it's part of our budget that we overpay for special ed. But when the money comes back to East Grammy, it goes back into the general fund and not back to our budget. If that money came back to our budget, we want to have this conversation tonight. We'd be able to take care of it. But because that money that was given to the Board of Education and we spent on special ed, more than the state said we should spend, they gave the gave us back more money, but it went into the general fund each year. If that came back to the Board of Ed, as we requested we'd ask, we wouldn't have this discussion tonight. We would be able to do exactly what you're doing. We'd have no impact on what we're doing, but because money that was given to us in July that cost us more money, and when the state reimbursed the town, there was. So that we can spend it on under teachers and things like that. That's a that's a big issue because it's a lot of money. And it's money that was given to us initially, but then when the state reimburses, it doesn't come back in our hands. If it did, we'd spend it appropriately, we wouldn't be able to have all these cuts, and we we would have, and I think the Board of Finance is gonna a much better handle of what's going on, much better handling.
So Bob, could you educate me on what that value is as well that goes back to general government?
Three hundred thousand or something?
I I believe that the last Treasury report uh the town has received on save around two hundred ninety six thousand. It's calculated at four point five, anything above a point, four point five times for future. Her people have spent, her children have spent, it's reimbursed from this.
That's why our numbers always look better later in the year, because we get that money back. Nobody ever wants to talk about that.
And and at another time, happy to have a conversation with the board of members, like, it is a complicated.
So it would have an impact.
Hundred percent.
You guys got two hundred and eighty thousand dollars back in your budget. Yeah, maybe we'd have a track at the high school and they could, we could do home uh home track meets.
Why don't we just call it two hundred? Give them two hundred tonight, call it a.
Can I ask you a question? Can I uh impose on you? Um, if we were to do that, is there a way for us to do that?
We have to make a transfer out of the general, transfer some portion of ECS reimbursement to the board of men.
I mean, they don't like, the the actually bank account is the town's general fund, right? So it's more on paper. I'm not sure, I mean, in the sixteen years I've been here, it's always been done that way. I'm not sure if there's a reason for that.
I think it's by the way the town is run.
So how do we budget that that revenue from a general?
We can do it going forward. We could decide now to give that money below the return, but I think that changes our whole dynamic.
I think, I I think to Missy's point, it's a complicated thing, and I would love to hear more at maybe the next meeting and then put a plan in place that solves for this, because I'm.
Yeah, I mean, is that is that general fund offset the the, is that one of the reasons why the the Board of Selecting's budget can be lower? Because that funding is there and and it offsets them having to ask for a refund? That was my question.
And you guys are taking all the state revenue as a number on the budget that you present to the public as a whole, and then you're just divvying it out. So it's really, that would just be like you could say, okay, we're gonna remove two hundred thousand and put it to Board of Ed. You can piece it any way you want. Some to capital, some to, you know, it's just how you're piecing it out, but when you're showing it to the town, it's just, here's all the revenue we're getting from the state, and here's all our expenses, and here's how we're divvying out the expenses.
What should I would have?
Bank account that you would move that much. You'd still have to show it in the general fund because we're getting it in the.
So the excess cost reimbursement, to be clear, is not figured into what we're anticipating from state?
It is.
Oh, yes, part of, okay.
Five year model. Yep, it's right on your five year model.
Okay.
Next year's model that lower than um or current year.
No, your proposed budget already accounted for a reduction in in capital.
It did, and what it did was it actually, so thank you, that's a good point. There was, there was a lot that um the original thought was, like Mike said, we may have to remove it, but I think when we look at year, I think it's twenty seven, twenty eight, we actually have an opportunity to move that capital number to that year, so that way we're at least not eliminating it from the budget. We just would have to postpone potentially some things on both Board of Ed and general government in order to hit that.
That's a whole, probably a whole nother, I mean, that's.
I I would agree.
We're in emotion at the moment.
But I think it's helpful for folks to know we're not just cutting it, we would be postponing it, and if you look at the the model that Jeff put forward, that is incorporated in there, I think it's twenty seven, twenty eight, and I think instead of going to the eight hundred, Jeff had talked about as we're trying to ramp up, it goes to nine hundred in that year. The other thing that I forgot to mention is that when we look at the outlying years, years four and five, I would argue years four and five generally look pretty good on most models, and what will change before that? It would actually give us an opportunity to keep the budgets the same and lower the tax impact, offset some of this this year or potentially add more to the budgets at that time, because we'll be in much better shape. Our challenge right now is we get the revow and then to try and get the cash balance to where it needs to be, so we can make sure that we can get the roof as we. Once we overcome those hurdles, things look a lot brighter. Again, stuff will come up before then.
Good and bad.
Hmm?
Good and bad.
Good and bad, right? To your point, maybe just more business in town, maybe we have more stuff. But I strongly believe that this is a compromise that gets us through those next couple of.
Biggest issue is inflation, if that stays down.
Completely agree, yeah, yeah.
I mean, if it goes down, not if it stays down.
Yeah, anyway, the only thing that I would say, I could support the number on numbers if we equalize the cuts in some way, and I'll just leave it at that.
So like, what was the, what were the two numbers that you threw up?
Well, I I don't think we need to get into the eight, nine percent.
Well, I mean, did.
Yeah, I was thinking some, you know.
My question is because what what would the impact be if, so Board of Selectment stays the same to, because we we're gonna follow what the voters said, but we reduce that amount that you had recommended.
Give or take.
From the capital, it's a smaller amount. How what, how big of an impact would that be?
You're you're talking about reducing an additional number from capital.
An extra twenty seven thousand, whatever that number was. How how big of an impact would that have over the the model that was put there before?
I think we're already struggling with capital as it is. I know um a lot of people were upset that the playscape is not getting as it is, because we have prioritized public safety and fire department and police. I don't know, I don't want to put Jay or Eden on the spot if they would know what that impact would be, but I think it will lead more towards public safety at this point.
Well, he just, the cap, what's, how's it have to do with capital?
Police vehicles, fire apparatus that would come out of capital.
In the model, there was a reduction of that we could add to the capital fund that to offset.
Where they would.
Saying if we if we took a slice little little bit more, what would what would be the impact? And if it's a safety impact, it's a safety impact, right? But I just wanted to throw that out as there could be another, no matter what we do, there's pain, right? So where where are we, are we gonna shoot ourselves in the foot, the knee, you know, we're getting shot somewhere, right?
So keep one thing in mind, we control capital, so we can choose what to approve or what not to approve, so we still maintain the control of that part.
Yeah, I understand that, right? But it's it's the the capital we're building over five hundred thousand because we know we have to do things. What is the impact of another reduction there? And that that's a pain. Is that pain worse than the pain of hitting where petition or going against the voters and hitting hitting the Board of Select, right? So I'm just kind of throwing some things out there that we can assess as which pain do we want to take? We're gonna take pain somewhere. Yeah, I think I think taking the pain in capital this year, if we if we don't split up the payments and we go with, you know, your mill rate change and just take the hit on capital for one year, that means we're not gonna have an increase in taxes next year, which gives us the.
Not as much.
We're not gonna have, we're not gonna have as big of an increase, right? Sorry, that's what I meant. And we're not gonna then have have that other that other uh uh like that fifty split, then come on and like tack on another, another percentage to it, right, to increase it even more, right?
Transparent. It it would be still above six percent as well.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
I I want folks to understand that that's where we are.
Which like Jeff said, right, to be go, we go down to a six percent, which then is better wiggle room to maybe, okay, well, maybe that extra seventy thousand dollars, we can add that on, and it's not, and it's and it's not as big of a hit because because we've kind of just stemmed the bleeding there. We're not, you know, trying to rip money out of the school. We're not trying to lower, you know, the the town's budget, because I agree it it should be there, and maybe it should even be a little bit higher to try and fund the other police officer, but I think this year because of the the reeval, I mean, it's gonna go higher. I think I think that I could totally get behind. One thing, Jim, is that, because you you've been you've been on the board now, you know, for the best year, so the capital has been suffering year over year, so it would just, it's it's kicking the can again. So I just want to make sure that everyone understands that, that even though I brought it up, it's still another kick of the can on something we know there's a big bill coming, and 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 it's gonna be bigger, even even with a small percentage, you know. But trying to find a box of which one, which one can we handle? You know, which one has the least amount of pain that that will take.
What if we did this? What if we took, what if we left both the general government and Board of Ed alone? Took the hundred thousand out of capital and took another seventy thousand out of the um cash balance? That changes our year end down, we would have been projecting ten and a half, it brings it down to ten point two.
What is that to the mill rate?
Um and we we leave the mill rate alone.
So thirty three.
So leave the mill rate as it is, everything the same, leave the mill rate alone. And but what we're doing is taking, so we're going ten point five down to ten point two. I think it was eight point eight in year two.
Yep.
And now it's eight point five, and then the year after it's nine point four. I think it's crazy.
I think so, like getting back to the 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 philosophy of we're aboard for another year and a half, two years guaranteed. I think as long as we get in agreement on that, and we're we're kind of on the same page for the most part, there's always gonna be flex. But I think I could agree to that, uh because we're in a position where we can increase. I think the mill rate decreased from thirty point five, but we we didn't really get that out there good enough. I mean, the thirty point five never really translated, so if we can reduce that, that's a selling.
It's a thirty.
Yeah. If we if we reduce, well, that's really the key point, right? And hold the budgets, if we're decreasing the mill rate and holding the budgets, giving people a shot at supporting the stuff that they want to support, I think you can get a budget passed.
Why do we even bother to have a referendum before you say we can allow the voter results?
I I bet, you know, I was, I could, I I I. We're not though. We're reducing the money.
Fifty four percent of people said the Board of Ed budget is too high, and you are proposing that we do not touch the Board of Ed budget. That is going against them.
So Oliver, Oliver, though, I do agree with some degree, but I do think that there is also the piece that the town isn't aware of about three hundred thousand dollars coming from, that's generated through Board of Ed that does come back to service the town. So there there is that piece to consider from an education perspective, because I I've been here for just a couple of months. I'm learning new things, and I think that the general public doesn't understand those things either. So I I don't necessarily have a strong opinion one way or another on, I I I do think that the vote was telling of the people that did come out to vote. I do believe that it's speculative that if we were to hold that same vote again and people saw the outcome, there there would be a larger swing towards yes um right amount or not enough.
You could say that, yeah. You could say that about any election. Say that about Brexit, right? Like, we have to go off the results that we're giving it.
But the one thing that I wanted to raise about, um, well, there's two questions. One is when we talk about public safety. If we have a, if we have an officer retire, are we gonna rehire? Because I know why we have the number we have right now, or is that then gonna reduce our general government again and then that vote of a hundred thousand dollars or so? So what, you know, what happens with with the future of our public safety when an officer retires? Should we go back to where we are? Do we have a new high watermark? And then the other piece is, when it comes to capital spends on items like a new playground, I see a lot of other towns doing corporate sponsorships. Can we explore those options too? Why why aren't we, once again, young, young in the position? So just curious.
I think that's a fantastic suggestion, right? Uh anything we can do to to bring in additional funding to be able to provide the things. We unfortunately have to make the tough choices.
Yep.
That was not a a fun meeting when we went over the capital, had to prioritize, you know, fire department, police department, and and that was what was left over, so um I I would love if we could do something like that, Jeff. I think it's a great suggestion.
But we, getting back to what I made from thirty point five proposed, the third. That's a bone. That's offering something in deference to the decision of the town to turn down the budget.
That's fifty percent.
It's two percent. We we lowered it by two percent and held the budgets where they were by changing our priorities, but I think that's a negligent offer.
We modeled a couple of different scenarios. We modeled the full two percent and went down to twenty nine point nine, but it got us to full two. It would love to be below thirty, right? But the challenge then is you're now impacting subsequent years. Like, I think we're gonna have a another hard conversation next year, even with a, you know, six and a half, six, six, seven, or whatever the model says right now, and that's with the two percent increase for both operating budgets. I think the biggest lever that we have to pull on there is if we feel comfortable going below ten percent in the cash balance. But for me, the 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 key thing on that is, are we gonna need to replace the roof or not? So next year, I think we'll have a little bit more flexibility. But I don't think we can pull on too much more before it starts to impact the following year and make the following years much tougher for us to be able to pass reasonable budgets.
But you can't give people something and not have them understand that there may be a time and have to pay, but things don't go, people understand budget.
I feel like I've been transparent with how increases next year.
Well, not questioning, I'm saying clearly.
Yeah.
We don't, we can't prognosticate, we can't read the future.
Yeah.
We have concerns, but we are doing the best we can for the town to fight to present something that reflects their turn down of the budget. If we lower the mill rate and and increase decrease on average people's taxes by two percent, that's our, you know, that's something. We're not ignoring their sentiment. What do you say, somebody?
It's a motion for.
I mean, there's a motion that I sense is not gonna pass.
Yeah, I have some trouble if we go back, because the question's gonna be asked again, is, it's gonna be the same exact question, is general government at three, seven, three, too high, too low, just right? It it seems like a double jeopardy. It seems like we're just gonna say, this question's still the same. What are we gonna go to a third one? What are we going to go to a third one?
Yeah, we need to Well, so I just want to make one comment about that question. Because they didn't use to be, they put it in 15, I mean, it's 15 years ago. I always argue that it was a misleading question. Because it's kind of like putting a sign on the Cumberland Farms gas tank. Do you think gas is too high, too low, or just right? Knowing that the quality of the coffee is going to suffer if you pay less. Some people that love that coffee, they're going to vote that it's just right. See what I'm saying? So it's really, we all think it's too expensive. I think it's too expensive to run a school system. I think it's, I would, I'm not going to vote that way because I understand that the Board of Finest is going to try to divine some answer from it. But I don't think there's anybody that doesn't think it's too expensive to do things today. So I always argued, when I always said, if you, if you want to cut it, what would you cut? That would be more of a leading kind of answer for me. And if you support it, what do you support the most? That kind of says where your priorities are. But to be fair, I don't think I've ever seen one where too high didn't win over too low.
Even when they passed?
Even when they passed.
Just right?
Yeah. Now I'd have to go back, but I don't, well, we just had that with general government where you have, I don't know, I
So you feel it's
It's still too high, being too low.
Because they're voting yes.
Right.
So there's got to be a just right.
We had years where, just not to cut you off, but we had years where Board of Ed passed dramatically. And the majority still said it was too high.
I, I am genuinely fearful that we are not going to do the town any service if we don't put forward something that's a compromise enough that the folks who want to support the schools are, feel like they're being heard and the folks that feel that the budget is too high is being
What's, what's that number, Oliver? I mean, this is
I think so.
This is where like the other night, having, having the conversation the other night would have drove me insane. Because we're, we're spec, you, you came up with what you believe is a proposal. But is it, would one half of 1% less meet the intent of the vote? And then everyone's fine? Or, I mean, so it's like, we, I, I think what we should first do is finish this motion. And then if it doesn't pass, have that conversation. But it's, we're, without the town coming in and giving us public comment, you know, this, this doesn't even represent 1% of 1% of the people who actually voted. It's also
I think 2% is a reasonable reduction. I'll leave it at that.
All right, so we have a motion in a second. And you have discussion.
And that's on the, the reducing the, the school budget by $70,000?
Yep, but it also allows us to drop the mill rate. Did you have an opportunity to look at the model that sent out? Did you guys play with the numbers kind of to get a sense of where that was going?
Much of different scenarios. I didn't need to play with it. There was enough options. It's like, you want another hamburger? You know, they were close. I mean, but to his point, we're talking about very small differences. My concern is inflation on the public. If you cut the Board of Ed by 70,000 and you don't lower, I like Jeff's suggestion of pulling the money out of a different bucket and saying, okay, you want lower taxes? This is what we're going to give you. We have priorities that we changed slightly. We've reduced the mill rate by 0.5. That's not a small increase.
I will tell you right now, I'm not going to be comfortable passing any budget that goes against the will of the voter. I think that's wrong.
Okay.
So
Give it up.
So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those nay. So what if we did that, all of that the same except instead of taking 70 out of the, um, Board of Ed, take, split it, take 35 and then 35 out of general fund?
Just plus, I, I, I could probably support that. You want to just open a conversation now because there's no motion?
Yeah.
So, so it's, yeah, it's not
Do you want to make your motion?
I can make a motion. So I got to do math there. So it's the same motion that we just had, 27, 642, 730. Board of Ed becomes 20, 235. General Government stays the same, debt service stays the same, capital 600. So that's wrong. So that's not general government, you got to reduce it. No, I was talking about taking it out of the general fund. I don't think the total is the same.
It's following the vote, is what he was trying to do. He said the deduction on the Board of Ed is less than what Oliver originally proposed. Well, just to be clear, that comes out of a different fund.
The general fund, not general government.
Right, general fund.
So you could general, I thought you initially said split it. Oh, 35, 35 for the Board of Ed, 35 from
So 20 million, 235 for the Board of Ed, plus 5, 638, no change from general government. Plus the debt service of 12, 473.
Getting all that, Kelly?
Kind of.
I just typed in the wrong number. The capital of 600. 5, 6, 38. So it's 20, 7, 677, 730.
What does that do to year three of our five-year model? Does it drop us below the 10%?
I don't think I have this. And right now I'm using a, I'm just using the no phase in model, I don't think it's
Wonder when they turn the air conditioning off.
Don't want to cut the budget anymore.
You dress for it. I'm worried about it with my motion. Will people see that as enough of a cut to the Board of Ed to?
Why do you say, yeah, okay.
Just going off the boat, Mike, right? So
Up to 400 people though, I mean.
We're a small town. That's your biggest turnout. And yeah, we had 24% of voters came out, which is significant.
I would be lowering the best majority of people have no idea what the answers to those questions were. So it's an individual decision. If you lower their no rate, they may change their decision. Wasn't about, uh, this is my, you know.
So this is, um, the general fund balance then is 10.1 instead of 10.2. It's 8.6 in the second year. It's 9.6 in the third year. And it's 13.1.
So I know with the prior proposal, when I ran the numbers, we'd have to go up above eight in order to have gotten to a cash balance of 10% for year two. Next year, Board of Ed tells us we need to replace the roof. If that's still feasible next year, how much do we need to increase taxes with next year to get to 10%? If we go with this change?
With all assumptions, first of all, even before that, this is the no phase in model. So it would have been 6.67.
Well, while you work on that number, it's also highly unlikely we're going to see the increases that were requested this year from Board of Ed or Board of Select. Just because the inflation's going down dramatically and they're not absorbing the loss of ARPA. And it's a perfect storm.
So, but the direct answer is eight, about eight and two thirds instead of six and two thirds.
And that's a 2% budget increase for both ones. John, I think 26 or 27?
Oh, it's at 26. Great, next year.
Those are 3%.
No, if you go to the phase in, that's a different, that was a different point in time where we were trying differently. There's, there's a couple of different versions if you go to the five-year model. Is it, can I ask Board of Ed a question? So I've been missing, a lot of the concern with the cash balance is again, it's good fiscal responsibility to have a 10% balance. But a lot of it is stemming on, we know the roof. We want to position ourselves to be able to take care of the roof if and when that, when that need happens. Now that we're closer to it, more than a year out, do you have more of a sense on like, is this really need to be next year? Is it something?
We've been spending a lot of money on catchey.
Okay.
And we, we've kicked it down.
Okay.
We, we have to off in our capital plan of going in and redoing Jim fours, because it's so the roof is done, we already do the two floors and then have the roof and some floors. Uh, but you know, the garbage cans out there, if it does leak, it's, it's been that way for a few years now.
Oliver, it's even, I did talk to Ed and he and Ray are going to do an assessment of the roof and see how much life it has left. And we'll have a better judge.
We had this conversation with the Building Committee the other night.
Yeah.
And the consensus with Jim and Rick and the other numbers was that if we could somehow hold it off to, were you there? Yeah, you were there, right? If we could hold it off, okay. So the idea was we have a, we have a bond that's rolling off in two years. That's the goal, to get to that, because that frees up a substantial amount of debt payment. So that's, that's the goal, whether or not, and they're doing an assessment. There's a lot of conversation around.
Okay.
Yeah, it may be worth it. I mean, we spent about 45 catchey already. Years ago, if there's, you know, for some dollar amount that's leaving, we can keep it going for a couple more years. And if we take a look at it, I guess my feelings, we'd be happy to, you know, on the safe and
Right, I think that's the big concern is the safety issue. As long as it's something we don't think is going to jeopardize that, we can get a couple more years out of it. I think it positions us better for future years, decreasing the amount. We were looking at it increasing taxes to get to that cash balance. Maybe we can take an approach where it's, where they're in year three, if not in year two. And that hopefully will also give more wiggle room potentially to the operating boards as well, which to Mike's point, hopefully will not be as bad if
Well, we're going to have to beef up the cash balance going into a bond period.
Correct.
From my, yeah, so we, but that's a
Yeah, we definitely
But if we can push that off, yes.
We're definitely going the wrong way.
You can't lower taxes
Right.
because people don't want to pay them. And it's a perfect storm this year.
There's no good answer. No, it's
I thought which, which
There's a motion that I don't think has been accepted.
Who made the motion?
I do have, we got halfway.
So the motion is for a budget of 27 million, 677, 730. Board of Ed, 20 million, 235, 000. General Government, 5, 638, 000. Debt Service, 12, 4730 and Capital, 605.
So that was what? That half, the $70,000 to 35, right?
That's all.
Yeah, he took it out of the Board of Ed, let General Government alone and it's paid for out of general fund.
It was what Oliver had previously proposed from our production for, uh, capital, right? You were at 600%.
Yes, yeah.
So the only, the only difference Oliver's motion is 35,000 out of Board of Ed instead of 70.
Yes, but it's coming out of the cash balance. And okay, the impact on that is you're now going to have to raise taxes probably more next year. You're kicking the can down the road a little bit more. Uh, and I think next year is going to be a challenging year as it is. Because we talked about earlier, we're not going the phase in route. One of the things I liked about my original motion, and this still applies here, is you're spreading the pain over two years. But there's still going to be more pain next year. And now it's more, and I don't know if that's going to be tougher for people to accept and make it tougher to get to where our cash balance is, right? That's, that's my only reservation.
I mean, it's always going to be painful though. I don't know anytime I do a budget year after year, it's always, it's always painful. We, we never have enough money. Um, like that's just the nature of reality. It's, there isn't a money tree we can pull from.
No, so it's just a tougher conversation next year is I think what the net result of that will be. But if we can do something with not having to worry about replacing the old roof for a couple of years until that debt service falls off, it positions us in a way where we don't necessarily have to worry about getting the cash balance back up to 10% in year two or year three. We can take our time, but to Mike's point, it definitely needs to happen before we can consider going to get it.
So did we have a second or did we just, did you actually, is a motion in effect? Or did we actually finish the motion?
I'll second it.
Do we have a motion?
I have a motion, I just
Okay.
Signing the bad motion. All right.
Hang on. I'll second it.
So we need to
Yeah, I just, I, I, I'll make a point that I, I can't support it because I really think we've already cut Board of Ed to the point where I am concerned, A, I've said that 100 times. B, I think that when you cut one board and not the other, having gone through 16, 14 of these budgets, it just doesn't look good. Uh, and we're talking about very small numbers. So if you were to take that 35 that you just threw out there and split it in half, then I could support it. I just, I think that the, the optics are great when you punish one board.
So, so I get what you're saying, but Oliver's point that the data says, right? That's all we have to go by. We can, we can speculate and wish and hope and all we want, but the numbers speak. And we're reacting to the numbers in a way that appears to the people that voted one way on the Board of Education, it's still a hit, it's not as big as a hit.
Right.
Right? The Board of Select's new budget said that it was good as it was, which is also a lower budget compared to the Board of Education. And we found a workaround so that the impact on the Board of Education is not as big. So we're following what the voters told us to do.
Yeah.
And we're making a compromise so that we can hopefully put something in front of the town that they can get behind and reduce their taxes a little bit.
Yeah, A, I disagree with lowering the Board of Ed budget just for that.
No, I get that. I mean, I wish we didn't have to lower anybody.
B, but I, I see, I'm looking at the same numbers you're looking at and Oliver's looking at. I just look at it differently. If, if you get a disagreement on expenditure, you split it along the, the percentages that you saw that agreed or disagreed, I can buy it. I think we're just looking at the same number. You're using almost like a
They're black and white numbers.
Using an electoral.
Like there are two, two separate questions with two separate results. If, if the question was, are these budgets too high or too low? And then, and then you can average it between, because they asked about the total budget?
Right.
Not individual
Well, they asked about the total.
They did, right. But, but they also asked about the individual budgets of the two different boards.
Right, and it swayed a little bit towards general government was more
So you say, you say a little bit, 8% is not a little, if it was 8% in taxes, you wouldn't be saying it was a little bit, right?
Well
But I, I think that there's another thing that you have to take into account, right? Okay. So when I, so I was elected, I have moral convictions and things that I believe in. Those are the things I'm going to vote on. I also can agree with Mike. And I think the $5 million budget is definitely easier to swallow than a much higher Board of Ed budget. But I mean, that's just the fact of reality. It costs money to, you know, teach our kids and put them in a good environment that's safe. And hopefully, you know, get them into good colleges so they become good, you know, members of society, right? Like we have to invest that money, just like we have to invest money in 401Ks in retirements. If, if we ever want to retire, we work till we're 100, you know? I mean, that's just the fact of reality. It's, it's hard.
reality, it's, it's hard, but, um, I just, I, I agree with Mike, I can't get behind that, because I, I, like, I think the school needs more money, I don't think it needs less money. So I think we should figure out another way to get about it, to get the mill rate down and save on taxes, right, because that's what everybody threw up signs about, it wasn't, you know, um.
There was signs just to say one way or the other, there was.
Say no to higher taxes.
Behind any of them, right?
But it's, but I mean, the, the, your taxes are gonna go up anyways, so it's not turning down the budget, it's, you're never gonna get lower taxes, it's, it's just not gonna happen, like, that's just not reality, right? So you can't just say yes and vote for it, or no, vote for lower taxes, because you're not gonna get lower taxes, it's, it's just not gonna happen.
But so, so, I mean, I, I, I don't disagree with you on, on, I think that we should be able to fund everybody the way they need to be funded. However, you kind of contradicted yourself a little bit, you were voted, and, and so you accept that responsibility because the majority said they want you in that seat.
Yeah.
But you won't accept the vote that was made after the fact that says that this budget's too high and this one is just right. So you, you can't, you can't play it both ways, man. So, to be, not, not to defend you or defend him, but what we do here, none of us are getting what we want, so we are taking into account. You know, if, if I really had a mandate, and I thought when I got elected, I had a man, you know, I'm gonna vote for what Mike stands for, I would vote against every budget, because I think we're not spending enough money on this or that. So to be fair, we do do that on a regular basis, that's a little, that's all I'm asking to do in relation to this. Is consider both sides. So what, what Jeff brought up was a compromise between the two.
Oh, no, no, I'm not saying.
So it's like, and, and, and you got a second from the other side of the table that says, okay, we, we can, I think we can agree to this, but we, but we still want to haggle over it. Somewhere it's gonna come, the money's gonna come, right? It's gotta come from somewhere, and, and which, which, which pain is less pain? Can the Board of Education absorb thirty-five? You know, they, they haven't said they can or cannot, but again, all, all we can do is make a recommendation, the town's gonna vote again, right? They're gonna vote on if we, if we. So, like, I'm gonna get back to my basic premise, which is, if you put out a budget that punishes one board and not the other.
It's not punishment.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll think, I'll use my word then, reduces one budget and not the other, okay? Which I just don't think that looks fair. And I, my concern is, you want everybody to see something out of an improvement in this budget. So if you reduce the cut to Board of Ed close to what you do Board of Selectmen, and you lower the mill rate, and you lower the percentage of average tax increase, you just clipped off a lot of things. My concern is if you, if you isolate one in terms of a cut, and you, and it looks like you're favoring one over the other, frank, frankly, okay? I, I don't think that that's getting back to, we don't have a mandate.
So, so now we're talking receptions, when we're, what we're doing is using data. Data says that those who were willing to get out and vote, said that the Board of Selectmen's budget was fine, and the Board of Education was high.
Right.
Right? I'm with you, I think that they should be able to get every penny they can get, take care of the school, however, we, we don't have that option.
Right.
So now, if, it's, it's not punishment, it's data.
Well.
And if we go against the vote, if we, we go for one vote, and then, then change our mind on how we read the other vote, then we're not, we're not following what the people who actually came out and voted. And they get another chance to vote.
Majority of people voted the budget down. If you reduce one and not the other, why? Because of the guidance questions, okay? Do you think? If you can explain that clearly in ten days to people, and say, okay, we favor, you know, you have, you have a motion, you have a second, I think we should have a vote.
I.
Okay, I agree.
Well, I was just gonna say, I am concerned. I was hoping that we as a board would be closer together, perhaps I just misread it.
We're pretty close.
I, I'm worried, does this get voted down at the public again, because we're we can't seem to come together, right?
Probably twelve people watching.
I.
I think thirty, about, twenty-three.
About forty-five people.
Oh, really, okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, it would be nicer if you were unanimous or.
Correct. Oh, I could get to unanimous. Myself. Let's just listen to what I've been saying. But no, in all seriousness, I get your point, I could get to unanimous, I'm just not there here, okay? Fair enough. Which is, that's it.
I am, okay.
So could you, yeah, you could get to unanimous.
Yeah, that's cool. So the motion's second, I'm in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close.
We're done.
No, we're not, we didn't talk about phasing.
Oh.
All right, we have to be fair.
Yeah, we're, oh, no, we're done.
I personally am not comfortable, we don't need to do it, but it's still on the agenda, we never formally came to a.
We have to decide if we're gonna ask the town to phase it in.
Correct.
In my, Bill, let me, give me a minute to.
Work it?
I just want to update.
Based on the numbers, yeah.
In my opinion for the phase in, if we don't see large impacts to revenues, I, I think that there's no reason not to at least do a two-year phase in. I, I think that, because at the end of the day, it saves taxpayers. Once again, the, the most advantageous is four years, but I understand the real world concerns with doing a four-year phase in. And it's not realistic, because we're gonna run into issues, but if there's.
Your point, though, if we had a town meeting, budget, and you brought everybody in the room, and you had an actuary or somebody like yourself explain it to people, I think you could get that passed. But I don't think you're gonna.
Uh, you could get it passed, but then.
Could you get it passed next year or the year after?
To Chris's point, we have fish memories, we're, we're not gonna remember three years down the line. And that's the real world thing, so two years maybe makes sense, three years, pushing it, four years, I, I, I see the story, the writing on the wall, and I would agree with that.
So as another alternate, I, I, I think that we're at a point where we have something that would pass. If it didn't, then, then that option of phasing would be something we would need to talk about.
It's a parachute motion.
I mean, it's, it's a plan B, but I be, believe right now, what, what was voted on would make it pass.
I, I understand that that would make it pass, but what I'm struggling with is, this is something that can save money for taxpayers, regard, regardless of.
Good.
No, sorry, um, that's what I'm saying, unless there's grant implications and revenue implications, which from what John was implying last week, it's probably minimal, especially over a two-year period, and once again, we'd have to, we'd have to understand from a law, lawyer's perspective. But if there's not an impact, it will save taxpayers a significant amount of money and pass it on to business owners, which they're the ones who are benefiting from this tax increase. You know, why, why should we suffer alone? I, I just don't see any reason to not heavily consider it.
I just think that the gray areas are so gray right now that it's, it's hard to really have meaningful conversation about it that way.
Yeah.
No, but, I mean, I get your point, but right now, what we have is, we know the one risk that we have, and that's the roof. If the roof can make it through next year, we're gonna be okay. All of a sudden they can't, that's our risk on what we just passed here today. That one there still has a laundry list of things that we don't understand.
Right. And, and the benefit of not having to tack on additional percentages to taxes next year also possibly leaves more money to capital and other things, potentially. Right?
I'm sorry, are you saying with the phases or about the phases?
Doubt, doubt, because you're not.
We know what we're paying, right?
Yeah, and, and maybe you gotta do a little bit, but that little bit can then not be double the amount, and then it'll let you put money into capital or something else, the, the percentage of increase won't be as high, because you're not gonna tack on with that other four, five percent. Here's the, I'll call it actuarial numbers, if you phase in fifty percent over two years on a thousand dollar increase, that saves you twenty-five percent of the increase over that two-year period. If you extend it out to four years, it's about thirty-five percent total over that time. So twenty-five percent reduction in what you're paying over, or what that increases over two years, that, that's sizable, especially if you're talking six to eight hundred dollars, six, six hundred to a thousand dollars per person.
It's still a gray area.
That's five hundred dollars per.
And so other impacts of, and losses could be.
Right.
Until we understand that, it, it just, it doesn't.
I, I'm not saying we need to vote on it tonight, but I, I definitely think it needs to be con, voted, it needs to be understood and voted on, because we can't just say.
I think we need the right people to come and actually explain what's, what the impacts are of that type of approach.
So are we able to surprise if, when Jeff finalizes the numbers, they're not gonna make as large of an impact as we think, based on the way we set up the five-year plan this time versus prior time, but maybe I'm wrong.
Well, so what I've, what I've done here, and I, I want to check it one more time, so the phase in, fifty percent phase in over two years, the seven point nine five increase in the first year, ten point seven six in the second year, not, we could play with that.
Why is that, it's supposed to?
Well, we could play with that once a budget passes, if we wanted to, but, but I was trying to do to keep the, um, general fund balance similar, so like, I figured not at the end of year one, that's, um, but at the end of year two, in one scenario, it's eight point nine, and the other, it's eight point six. Um, year three's a little off, it's, you know, it, the general fund balance is generally better starting in year three with the no phase.
So we're talking a base, you, you're talking, you're, you're incorporating the two percent increases into your model.
Incorporate, yeah, like, incorporate two percent increases into the budget.
That's why I opposed, yeah.
So, I, I think, and, and I don't have the model in front of me, but I think before, we were looking at a tax impact of dropping it from fourteen point three three to twelve point four five for this year.
That is still a case.
And six point six seven for next year.
Yes, that hasn't changed, that's in the no phasing scenario.
So the only.
And then after that, it depends on, you know, the, the revaluations out of the picture.
So really, the difference here is we're gonna pay more in year two versus year one, and I think that would be a more challenging thing for the public to get on board with. Uh, I think, yeah, I don't know, I'm just.
Well, you're, you're gonna pay more in year one and year two versus, because you're gonna pay the same amount of taxes next year plus the increase over what you're gonna pay this year if you don't do the phasing. If you don't do the phasing, you pay the same amount of taxes this year and next year, plus the increase.
Yeah, it's eleven on top of one oh, let's call it eight, right?
So versus taking a reduction this year and then paying more next year. It, it, it's all about the framing, but from a logical standpoint, if there's no revenue impacts, which once again, we need to understand, there is.
With educational cost share went down, and that would be.
Then that would, that would.
Right, yeah, you can't figure any of that.
Right, but that's what we're, that's.
Right, no, no, but that's what I'm saying is, if we need to consider that at a, at a later date, but the question is, is when do we need to make, how long do we have to make that action plan?
We actually need to consider it now, because it, it really needs to go into the, um.
Yeah, no, so, so could we consider the vote now, but learn more about it before the, before the presentation?
Before the budget fails again? No, kidding. Or potentially, if we came back, we could revisit this. So to, to your point, it's our, it's our ace in our back pocket, right, if we fail this time?
Well, what I'm saying is, if you presented it at, at the, at the town meeting to vote on, but you went, you present both, you know, you, you're able to present the scenario, this is what happens to the taxes, it does save us taxpayer money, but we have to fund a little bit more through, we, so at the end of the day, taxes are still lower, because we're gonna lose some minimal grant money, but we're also going to have lower taxes, because the, the, um, the corporate side is gonna be subsidizing that a little bit.
I think everybody just fell asleep, but A, I mean, it's not just, not here, I'm not talking about the, right? But no, this is, this is the issue, I think the big issue for me, just from a practical standpoint, is if you're presenting something where you envision an eight percent increase this year and a ten percent increase next year, I think that's a hard sell. I think if you do it all in one year, it's, and I'm not, once again, I'm using the word sell, because that's you have to convince people that this is the right thing. To your point, it's the best way to go financially. But can you count on people to accept that, A, now or in year two?
The other thing we can do, um, not that I'm a fan of this, but if we could, we could switch the mill rates.
Yes.
So that, you know, we're gonna have a higher general fund balance in the first year, so that the first year of the phasing is the. I do that, right, so we could bump it up and we would have.
So you could go seventy-five, twenty-five?
No, no, I mean, um.
Or just change, you could do that too.
You could do that.
Or you could change the mill rate itself.
Change the mill rate in the first year so that.
I get it, it's kind of a little dising, you know, and I'm not trying to, it's an idea, right?
Right, it wound up with like a twelve percent balance. So you're taxing this year in order to lower.
Motion on the strike for how we do, going forward with this.
So, well, let's, so, before we have a motion, I think ideally, we go into the town meeting with either recommending phase in or not. If we are, the town meeting's gotta go one way or not, that's gonna, right, we're gonna, I mean, we would have an agenda. So I, I think the first thing would be, do we recommend a phase in? Given this, so, I would entertain.
So to, to the legal question, I'm, I'm getting lost in the words here, you don't have to say that until we set the tax rate at the meeting after the vote. We gotta do it now, they need to know.
Town meeting.
Should've been done months ago, ideally, right? Well, no, they need to know what we're doing, I just, I, I thought I was.
The town meeting has to approve.
Yeah, the, the legislative, which is our town, has to approve.
Right.
If that's the way around, we're gonna take.
Then, then we would give them a budget that is based on the case, I mean, it's just gonna be the same numbers. The mill rates.
Want to do a poll?
I'll make it, I'll make a motion. Okay, I'll make a motion to not do a phase in.
Second that. Use a second, all right, is there any other discussion? I'm in favor, say aye.
Aye. So we were unanimous.
So we're not gonna phase in. And we are gonna recommend.
Get back.
Yes.
I, I mean, it was a good conversation, but, I mean, yeah. But going forward. It's, if, uh, if it does fail, I think it's something.
Yeah, absolutely.
That, that's, that's a shotgun blast type of. Not that it's not a good idea.
No, 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 I understand, it's, it's the optics of it that we struggle with. I had a feeling that's where the route, we were all going.
Glandshated, Jim.
All right, um, is there, um, all right, so we have.
We'll adjourn.
Hold on a second. We're gonna have a public comment, before we even get there, um, I will send out to the board members, other interested parties, the, um, updated model. Um, and then I'll walk on the, uh, revision to this, Oliver, right, um, help it down. Okay, public comment?
Yes, um, there's some on Zoom, I don't know if anyone, person.
We're gonna start, um, we'll, we'll start on Zoom, okay?
Um.
Is there anyone?
Just waiting for them to unmute. Jennifer, did you want to say something?
We'll, we'll take comments in the room then.
Okay. She had wanted to earlier. Uh, you can take them in the room for now.
I actually have a question for a fellow town treasurer. Even though we're in this room with discussions about school. What, how does the, um, operations get funded if this proposed budget goes to?
So I'm going to slightly defer to Sheri, but I think we can bill at our old mill rate, we can postpone billing, do I have that correct, Sheri?
So I know when it happened with us before, we get tax goes out at the end of September, what the Board of Finance did was set a mill rate, um, and send out bills for just real estate. And then in September, when we sent out bills for, uh, motor vehicles and personal property, uh, real estate got an additional bill based on, um, what, what the difference is between whatever was passed.
Supplemental.
Right, but however, it worked out to get it. Because we can't send out bills on last year, because it's on a different value.
So we would set a mill rate, you send out a, a bill to get some money in the coffers.
Correct.
And we figure out our.
And then we'd have to do this, and we did it with just real estate, because it'd be too hard to figure out, um, the smaller bills with personal and.
So the second bill is the adjustment?
Correct, so then they, they get a sec, whenever the budget passes and you have a, your final mill rate, then a second billing would happen.
Okay, and I just want to emphasize, I know Sheri and I have had this discussion, that you're looking at for the second billing, if that is the case, it's about eight thousand dollars just for the mailing, and for having the bills processed, as well. dollars just for the mailing and for having the bills processed, as well as the second, third referendums are close to, so just take that into consideration when you're hearing the voters, what they're saying.
So we should try. So how would it work if the budget got shot down because it's too high? Wouldn't be a supplemental tax bill if people had paid too much, right? Like, how would that work?
We set a mill.
You're going to be setting the mill rate.
Okay.
You set the mill rate.
Lower.
Just enough to where you need to be, just to cover your expenses.
That makes more sense.
And there is also, if I'm not mistaken, an option to delay doing any of that, right, Sherri? And so delay the second billing, like send the tax bills out a little later and have them do a little later? Was that, did I understand that correctly?
You, again, that's whether you're not, you need the money.
Right, but I'm saying, so if it's just a matter of a few weeks and it can save eight thousand dollars of a second mailing?
Yep.
That's my, that's where I was.
That's where that cash balance comes in handy, right?
Correct. I hope that, yep.
There was a lot more complicated answer than I was.
Summed up the evening.
Um, yes.
I just have a question. I've been wondering why the burden is so much on residential, not on commercial. I've had this question all along.
Um, it's the market, I mean, I'll, I'll give my point of view and then ask the tax associate, but in the past five years, the values of residential real estate skyrocketed and not so much for commercial or industrial.
Okay, so it's not a decision that anybody made?
No.
Okay, I just didn't figure that out.
Other comments in the room? Yes, sir.
I have two questions. One is, where Mike was going with the thirty-five, thirty-five thing, I'm not really care about the Board of Education thing, but I was wondering, you know, what people were concerned about to have kids is losing the seven teachers originally, and then it went to three teachers, okay, at, at seventy thousand. So what would happen if it went to thirty-five for the Board of Ed, would they be able to handle their budget and not lose any teachers? That was, I just want to kind of everybody to think about that, because I didn't hear any answer on that one. Um, and the second thing is, I think going forward, somebody's really got to get onto Planning and Zoning Commission or whoever to get the businesses in town and get the burden off of, you know, the, the taxpayers, as in like in my case, especially the senior citizens. I mean, I've been talking to seniors now or talking, man, taxes keep going up, we have to leave town. They leave town, who's going to come into their house, somebody with children, and then you gotta, you're going to end up having to build another school, and the taxes, you know? It's a never-ending scenario. We need more businesses in town. And I keep hearing, oh, we don't want warehouses and all this. Okay, fine, well, we got to get something in town.
I think only one, only one vote went down negative, and that was a huge warehouse. Everything else has been approved.
No, I'm pretty much.
Yeah, that, that was the only one that failed.
I thought there were a lot of three and three votes.
But that's not a, that's not.
I've been hearing it over, and I hadn't said something.
All right, thank you, thank you.
But I appreciate that comment. I agree, I think that Planning, Zoning and, and Economic Development should work together to figure out a way to get a, get businesses in here that actually produce revenue that the town can agree on. And if that means making deals with these developers, that they give more to the town initially, or whatever it is, so that, that it satisfies keeping our town the way it is, the reason why we, we all live here, but also bring in revenue, right? So there's a way around it, we just have to take a breath and work together to figure out how to do it.
They have been working very hard to do that.
Yeah.
Back to ours, that's sort of ours. Any other comments in the room? Yes.
I'm not sure if I'm permitted to comment. I'm not a resident of East Granby, however, I'm representing the Board of Education. So I'm also part of a public.
Go ahead.
I wanted to speak a little bit about the timeline of the teachers. The budget process starts in October, so we're in our eighth month. We, it's not unique to the Board of Education budgets, it's the way our budgets work. And I want to speak a little bit about kind of how we use scare tactics to say, so I don't use scare tactics at all. The budget changes. So when we started in January sixteenth with the Board of Finance, at that time, we had absolutely no resignations, retirements, or, um, even plus. February sixth, the Board of Finance provided a budget guidance to us. March nineteenth, I still have no resignations, retirements. We estimated from the get-go about seven staff members, seven FTE. That all depended on salary levels, right? So that could be five, that could be six, that could be seven staff members. Moving ahead, the last presentation of the town meeting, when we presented a five point eight nine, that includes six point two FTE reduction. Five point two certified teachers, one non-certified. I also shared that we would not be replacing those teachers. So the seven that we gave the notices to, because by state law, we need to provide by equal first, non-renewal notices. So that was solely based on tenure status, right? So those seven, we still have a reduction of six point two, which has been pretty stagnant since the beginning. It's just been, the people have changed because of voluntary retirements, resignations, and we've been fortunate to be able to, the certifications in-house absorb the vast majority, so it's a constantly puzzles. I just wanted to kind of clarify the staff members with the non-renewal, how that takes place. And another example, I have three middle school math teachers. Only one is certified teacher at high school because there's three different certifications. So we're not looking at solely just numbers, it's all based on certification. So the five, so the five point eight nine, the last referendum, is already a reduction of six point two FTE. It includes one layoff, which was an S cert-winded position. Everything else was a voluntary.
Other comments in the room? Yes, sir.
I would hope with the town here in the, by the way, I think you guys are doing a terrific job, but it's, it's not easy. At the town meeting, I had hoped you'd understand the community about costs. We incur every time we do a referendum, we need seven thousand dollars, I think we have a bunch of people coming out of vote. Pretty well the dinner with the money it's costing, we just have a referendum each time. And here in about sometimes about five, six, seven referendums, here we're spending more money than you paid for that budget. Uh, I think we need to inform people, but I'll give credit to people I see in here. Mrs. Tom Malonis, I see her all the time, she knows what's going on. People that come to these meetings like you, come to get educated. And then we make decisions on taxes that affect the whole community. Uh, I have a neighbor that's going to vote no if she raises taxes by fifty cents, they're coming in voting. Uh, there are people like that. Uh, we live in an educated community, I think many people in this community care about this community, and I think it's time where those people be heard and for people to realize the money we're throwing down the toilet every time we have a referendum because we just think it's the best thing to do here in the community. I think the people that come here tonight, this gentleman here, I see him at Board of Ed meetings, I see him at Board of Finance meetings, and I hear what he's saying, and I hear him as a board member, and I think the Board of Finance hears him. I think these are people, what you see here, we, we see them all the time. They count. Uh, I've lived in this town for a few years. We used to have town meetings where we just voted on the budget, it's in across the city, but we had educated people there and we voted out. At the time, about fifteen years ago, we decided to change and go to referendum. I think it's a terrific sounding idea, but when, when we're bragging about twenty-four percent coming out to vote, that that's a record, that's embarrassing, that we spent seven thousand dollars and then we sit here and talk about what fifty-two percent of people want. These are the people that are educated, and I think more and more people would come out. But with technology today, this community is more educated about budgets than we ever were, ever were. Twenty years ago, you know, getting information out was extremely difficult. Uh, and here we are, just spending money on having referendums, having referendums, and the same thing's going to happen, where we have people coming out, who don't care, who only care about what it costs them, and make a decision. I, I don't mind when people vote no, I don't mind when people vote yes, but at least you should be informed of how you vote. And it bothers me when I see such poor turnout. But I think people, if they realize what it's costing the community, I mean, I live with four jobs, I can go out to dinner for what it costs me as a taxpayer to do one referendum. And now we have another referendum, and we could have four, five, or six of them, and it's difficult. I think the time has come, if people care, they need to be educated. I mean, education is business we're in. Ignorance costs us a lot more money, and ignorance is costing us more money. People don't like it, Board of Finance, Board of Education make changes. I'm going to go back to the Board of Ed, and we're going to have to do what we have to do. Give us a mandate and, and we'll do it. But we make our decisions, and our decisions should be made on what is the impact on student achievement? It's different than what you have to do, you're here to finance people. But when we look at making cuts, and I, and I say that's not a positive thing for student achievement, the board of members were elected to spend money appropriately so students achieve. It's very difficult when we keep getting cut. I've used it for forty years, it's a delicate balance. Thirty-five thousand dollars may not sound like much, uh, but it does make a difference. And what we've been doing makes a big difference. And there are nine members on the Board of Education, and I can't even begin to tell you the number of hours, workshop hours, that they've spent doing this. And then we're going to have people come and make a decision who, who don't know anything about, and they don't want to know anything about what's really going on. Uh, I commend you for what you're doing, I thank the community for coming out, because it affects all of us, and I think we need to talk to our neighbors, whatever they think about being educated. It, it does cost to run a community, in every community in this country. And what kind of community we want to be, a lot of it depends upon what our costs are. Taxes are high, I'm the first to admit, I don't like high taxes, but as I see how those dollars are being spent, I'd rather spend money on education and on, on having bigger prisons, we can do that. You know, we're going to pay one way or the other. We educate them so they become productive citizens, or we just cut the whole education budget, and we can put people in prisons for the next fifty years, because we don't give them education, they can give back to their community. But the seven thousand dollars that each time we do a referendum, people need to know that, it's not free. And it's hurting the general government's budget, it's hurting our budget. Now, and then the last thing, the Board of Ed, it's, it's the last two years, you, you've heard us, we're starting to go to the time and expense to improve our fields. Back thirty years ago, the town took care of all the, all the fields in town, all the schools. And then at one time, the town decided they weren't going to do that. And the school, which is again, in the business of education, we're, we're not roof people, I'm glad they're going to go inspect our roofs, there's a missy we didn't hire her on her roofing. But those things cost a ton of money, and we know that. We need the right people doing the right things. And with, with that said, you know, I'll be done, but I thank you guys all for what you're doing. But it's frustrating to sit here and see all these people and all the work you do and all the work we do, and then some people come out and just make decisions and they, they don't come out to give us a reason why, it's just too much. You know what? It costs money to live here. It costs money to go to Granby, if I want to move to Sisberry, Avon, Newington, South Hill, whatever. It's, it's the same where we go, ladies and gentlemen. And I'm glad that at least East Granby, I think we're listening to each other, those of us that come out and want to know about it. I'm on the Board of Ed because I spent a lot of taxes, but I want to know how our taxes are spent. And I don't have kids in the system, but I have grandkids in the system, and I think they share the same opportunity that Todd Zesson had when he went to school here, that my kids had when they went to school here. It costs money, but it pays in law. Education, you, you watch the news, each Granby educational system is not a black hole. We're not throwing money down, we're looking at the cities of this state are getting and what they're doing with the money. Uh, we're, we're doing a great job, and, and you know what? Not on the Board of Ed, we go back and say we got to cut our budget thirty-five thousand dollars, you're going to ask me, I have that number, thirty-five thousand, just pulled out of the sky, and, and we've got to do things that affect student money. That's difficult for us. Uh, we don't like doing it. Your job is easier just through the dollar amounts. We've got to cut people, we got to take programs away from kids, and that's not what we want to do. But I, I know it's not easy, I appreciate everything you guys have done, thank you much. And the people who are on Zoom. How many people are on Zoom tonight?
Sixteen. Well, there was, it was, it was almost double that before.
Yeah, I was going to say, I saw forty, twenty-six.
That's, that's technology, those are the kind of decisions.
We had a hundred before you started talking, Bob. You said we had a hundred before you started your speech. No, I'm just kidding.
I'm sorry.
Comments in the room?
I want to just thank Bob and Missy for taking time to explain that, that was useful.
Thank you. I also want to say, thank you, the job is not easy. I don't live in this district, I have the same issues, you know, obviously, in my town. But I appreciate, and I know you do as a town, and I do consider it my time, I've been almost twenty years. My heart is in here just as much as it is in most other places. Your comments, your thoughtful discussions and debates are appreciated.
Yes.
Uh, I guess I just also want to say, I appreciate that you've been able about your decision-making. It's certainly hard, but you know that it isn't the school, children's fault that there's a rebalance, you know, taxes are going up and the general government's fault, that they end up paying the price for that happening. Um, so, so I do appreciate that, I think the town has seen how stressful it is, so as of just here, we're talking about oil planning and zoning should do more and economic development shouldn't do more. Well, I think Economic Development Committee lost their funding completely, or most of it, most of it, because of budget cuts. Uh, we have a town fighter who works two half-days a week right now, so certainly we're making cuts across the board and it's not easy for any departments, um, you know, so just making sure that you know that, that burden goes across general government as well as these students who are, who are taking the brunt of it because of, you know, the rebound. So I appreciate that you don't take that lightly for any part of our town government vote.
Do you have any comments on Zoom? I, I know we had one earlier, we're having an audio challenge.
Yes, um, I'm going to read one from a resident, Keith Clappy, he asked, he typed it, and I'll read it. Questions, um, at the referendum, questions two and three were non-binding advisory votes. My understanding is that both resulted with majority that said too high. The four hundred plus people who voted no on the budget were the same four hundred people who voted too high on number two and number three. If we're following the will of the people, we should focus on lowering the overall tax burden regardless of which budgets go down. Board of Selectmen versus Board of Ed. The urge to lower one specific budget, i.e. Board of Ed, to satisfy those voters is short-sighted. The next budget will go up, a third vote, and hopefully more voters, informed voters will come out and vote when they realize what's truly at stake for the town. In my opinion, informing, educating the voters who chose not to vote, not to attend these meetings before they vote is the most responsible thing to do. The members of the Board of Finance were elected to make educated decisions for the town, having the expertise to do so. It's disappointing to see the Board of Finance relying on the vote of an uninformed population to change the actions of the Board of Finance, who we elect and entrust with the finances of the town. And, um, there was one more person.
I'm here, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you.
Hi, um, my name is Jennifer Lyman, I've been a resident of East Granby for quite some time. And I, I guess my, my biggest thing was, um, you know, our, my, my overall concern was, was our, our tax burden and, and where am I as, as a person who's working already two jobs, my husband is already working, um, two jobs, where do we come up with this additional money? And I, I get what everybody's saying, I mean, taxes are just going to go up, everything has gone up. Our homeowners has doubled, our, our car and, our car taxes, I mean, our car insurance has, has doubled. Um, what we're, what we're proposing with all of these, um, taxes, I was, I was concerned, I'm nervous, I mean, am I going to be able to make those payments come, come August? Is it going to happen? Um, so as a family, we've had to make serious concessions, and I, I don't, I don't want to say that, you know, that's not your problem, that's, that's my problem, but these are major concerns of mine. I mean, we're supposed to be attracting families with children, I have children, I have children in the school, um, but if I can't afford to live here, how, how are we supposed Um, but if I can't afford to live here, how, how are we supposed to attract families? That was my, that was my thought.
Thank you. Any other comments on Zoom meeting?
Um, excuse me, I don't see any others.
Kelly?
I don't know if I'm speaking for the towns folks, uh, the town hall folks. But it's very frustrating when people keep saying that the public is uneducated. Um, we send out Talk Turkey. We have town meetings that people attend. So I, I'm not sure where the public is uneducated is coming from, but just from my role at the senior center and what I hear from town hall, people are very informed of what is going on. They, so I'm, I'm just not sure where that comes from and it's frustrating if people don't read the Talk Turkey or they, you know, then there's not much more that the town can do to educate what the board can do. They take a ton of time to present, send a mailing out, which costs money. Other than sitting at everyone's house and explaining things, there's no other way. But the seniors that I speak with, they are very well informed as to what the implications are of the budget. So I'm just saying that from the town side. Um, but the town does everything that they can, the board does everything that they can to educate the public. And I think it does work. The people who do vote do read those things and, yeah, so that's nice.
Before we adjourn, I just want to thank the town employees. I mean, Donna, Sheri, Kelly, Eden, on Zoom. I mean, every question that I've had, you guys have answered them like that sometimes. That weird hours? Sent Donna an email at four thirty in the morning and got a response. Um, so, uh, you know, the support you, you give to me and add to the board is just fantastic. So thank you all for that. All right.
Anybody got a motion?
Motion to adjourn. I'll say. Yeah, it's on the stage.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.